So, welcome. Council has just concluded an executive session. So, we're going to welcome everybody again to the December 11th, 2018 City Council meeting. And we have, again, just completed the executive session. Our special business tonight is a joint meeting with the Planning Commission to discuss Agenda Bill 5513, the 2019 Planning Commission Work Plan and Community Engagement. Before we do that, we do, council need to approve the agenda. May I have a motion? First and second, it all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes and agenda is approved. So, with that, in about five minutes, we will start the planning session with the Planning Commission. But we want to make sure you guys have a chance to go back and get some food, if you want. So, how about 6:10, start? Good evening, everyone. So, anyway, thank you and welcome to the Planning Commission. We appreciate your time tonight. We have before us an Agenda Bill, which, for the sake of the public, essentially is going to give us the opportunity to talk with the Planning Commission, not just about what we're looking forward to in 2019 and beyond, but certainly looking at the incredible year that you've had in 2018. With that said, I think we have to start with an incredible thank you for the number of sessions, the amount of time, the hours, and even the complexity of the issues that you've addressed over the course of the last 12 months. So, I'm just going to start with that first sort of moment of appreciation. As we go through and we start looking not only at what you did at 2018 and 2019, I think we also owe some appreciation to the leadership of the Planning Commission, as well as within the city who recognized that we would be trying to come up with a more reasonable workload in the coming 12 months. And that has been, for the sake of council, who may or may not have caught that, that is a part of the structure for 2019, is to make sure that the Planning Commission does have the ability to perhaps enjoy a little bit of their summer months without meeting perhaps even on a weekly basis, as you guys were occasionally doing. So, with that said, I'm going to go ahead and turn over to Evan. And again, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and Planning Commission. I'm not used to speaking to all of you all at the same time. I do have a couple of slides I thought I'd run through. I apologize for standing behind some of the council members. I think it's probably just more efficient if I'm sitting here at the mic rather than down at the table. I am joined this evening by at least two of the staff that helped us over the last year, year and a half here. Nicole Godet, our senior planner, and Allison Van Gorb, our ombudsman, not present in the room, are the other three planners that actually helped with the work plan for this last year. So, tonight, what I thought I'd do, I'm more or less following the pattern of the Agenda Bill. I did deviate just a little bit. I thought we'd do a quick overview of the 2018 Planning Commission work, just to take a quick look at the year in review, and then look forward at 2019 and even some thoughts into 2020 and 2021. And maybe end with a little bit of a discussion around the community engagement process that we've been using for the last two years and what we anticipate moving forward. This is the kind of presentation where I'm hoping people will interrupt me as we go along if you're not clear what I'm talking about, or if you have comments or thoughts that we should hear on the staff end, so we give you the right product at the end of this exercise. So, looking back at the 2018 work plan, this is, of course, in more detail in your Agenda Bill, but we had a number of very substantive projects that we completed. We went through the 2018 Conference of Plan Amendments, I have a typo there, which included a rezon for the Tully's property. Fifteen other amendments were reviewed by the Planning Commission. We looked at a code compliance ordinance. This would involve both the writing of a new title for our zoning code and then updating significant chunks of the remainder of the zoning code. We adopted a brand-new procedural code amendment, which really streamlines many of our permitting processes. We've gone through our spring code cleanup, and we've adopted a transportation concurrency ordinance. All of those together, right there, required about 22 Planning Commission meetings, 12 City Council meetings, and more than 220 pages of text in the final form. So, drafts, of course, would add on to that 220-page count. Looking forward, we didn't finish everything that we really started in 2018. So, you'll see, and this is really called out in Exhibit 2, and then in Exhibit 3, in a little bit higher level detail of your packet, we have work that continues into 2019. That specifically, at the moment, work that's underway would include an update to our Curricularies regulations. Planning Commission has met several times to look at, first, the best available science, and then the draft code just was shared with the Planning Commission about a week ago. And coming in January, February, and likely even into early March, we'll have further review, public process, and eventually a recommendation to the City Council. We are also starting up our Community Facilities Zone discussion. So, that involves both a code amendment. Remember, this is, of course, a follow-on to the 2018 Conference of Plan Amendment. That code amendment includes essentially drafting new regulations for this community facility zone, potentially rezoning several properties just located to the east of the City Hall site, the French-American School, Strong Jewish Community Center, and the Herzl-Nurtemiedd properties. That is going to go through a much more rigorous process moving forward. We have a community meeting on December 13th, this coming Thursday. We have another community meeting on January 23rd, I believe, 24th, thank you. And then we have several Planning Commission meetings with a recommendation coming to City Council likely in April. The question, of course, when we get to this point is, do we think the new community facility zoning and regulations actually serve the purpose that we were envisioning when we put together the Conference of Plan Amendment? And the last is, we do have a little bit of a code cleanup amendment that has been before the Planning Commission, a little bit is kind of filling in the gaps, if you will, between big projects. We expect that to wrap up probably in January of this coming year and come to City Council at that point. So, that's all stuff that's currently scheduled for the 2019 Comp Plan that started in 2018, pardon me, 2019 Work Plan, not Comp Plan. I have two other items, maybe the second bullet on the screen, that I'm anticipating we will start in 2019. One is an update to our sign code regulations, our sign regulations. There was a somewhat famous case that came out a few years ago, the town of Gilbert versus Reed. And it really highlighted that the city cannot use any type of content basis for its sign code regulations. This is something that we think probably creates a little bit of a liability for the city of Mercer Island and is one of those codes that we really should update and address. The second item is, I do intend to have at least one more round of code cleanup, probably starting this spring and moving into maybe even the early fall of 2019. And then, of course, we have our 2019 Conference of Plan Amendments. Council may recall, and the Planning Commission, of course, will recall, that we identified four Conference of Plan Amendments in the discussion back in October and early November. That docket was adopted November 20th. The four items at a high level were a review of the Town Center subarea and the mapping that we have in the Conference of Plan, some goals and policies around climate change, economic development, and then non-motorized and multimodal transportation. All of these are laid out for 2019 as Exhibit 2 in your packet. And to the mayor's point a few moments ago, really what we were trying to do was wrap up a body of work, if you will, the first half of this year, have a little bit of a breathing session, because I think everybody's getting a little bit tired, if you will. And then maybe, starting in September or so of 2019, we really begin to ramp up our second round of product for the 2019 year. Any questions around 2019, as it's at least laid out for the moment? Crickets? Silence is agreement? I can move on? So, looking forward, maybe starting to move into the bigger-picture discussion, you'll note in Exhibit number one, there's a fairly, and so, just to remind the City Council and Planning Commission, I'm looking at essentially the memo that I produced. There is a fairly lengthy body of work that the Planning Commission and City Council have collectively identified that they would like to address over the next few years. Some of these, I've tried to work into a three-year work plan and also identify things that are maybe more contextual in nature that are going to come to the city of Mercer Island and we will need to address. So, to put a little bit more flesh to this, in 2019, I think there are a couple of other items that we may want to start the discussion around. And these are coming out of either the Conference of Plan Amendments that we did in 2018, or, again, some federal rule changes related to small cells. So, the first is, we do have a green building program policy, or set of policies that were adopted in 2018. It may make sense for us to start talking about what types of implementation we want to see probably towards the end of the year in 2019. We have an ongoing discussion around commuter parking, both in Town Center and then maybe in the neighborhoods at large. We have, for example, the connector using some of our parking lots to connect Microsoft staff to their bus system. And then, as I mentioned, the small cell development regulations, small cells are wireless communication facilities. So, they're the thing that really lets you run Netflix through your Android phone or your iPhone, if you have one of those. They're really geared towards data. They are something that the FCC has recently changed its rules around, and I think we may want to adaptively manage how these look over time. The City Council and Planning Commission may recall that we recently had about 39 of these small cells built by T-Mobile. I put these as maybes, because these are the items that, honestly, I'm not sure if these are both achievable in 2019. And I'm not quite certain yet as to the scope and the desire for us to explore these items. Looking at 2020, you'll see I've listed another block of maybe five or six items that we would want to talk about. And what I've tried to do in Exhibit 3, which I'll get to in a moment on the slides, but is lay out how each of these would sequence through the various quarters in each year. The first is another follow-up, really, actually, all five of these are follow-up items to our Conference of Plan updates that we addressed in 2018. So, the first is looking at this pilot program that we've discussed at some length around flexible, single-family development design. The second would be an update to our transportation impact fees to match our updated transportation improvement plan and possibly update our impact fees themselves. The third actually did not come out of the Conference of Plan, pardon me, I misspoke. That's an update to our building code. So, this is really making sure that we just comply with the state and the state's mandate for building code requirements. The fourth item would be looking into creating some regulations supporting a creative arts district. Again, the Council and Planning Commission may recall, this was one of the arts and culture plan items that came out of the 2018 Conference of Plan Amendments. And the last, I do anticipate, we might have some new ideas of things we want to talk about from a policy level. So, these are the items I have scheduled at the moment for 19 and 20. Any questions, thoughts, direction?
Yeah, hi, thank you for that. Can you elaborate a little bit more on 2019? If we already have a full docket and we're thinking about giving the Planning Commission some respite in the summer, are these emerging issues you see coming? Or is this like a nice-to-do if we get those other things done early? Or is there some urgency around those? Can you help me understand why that's a maybe?
It's some of both. So, to some extent, I do want to have a direct conversation with the City Council and Planning Commission around scoping. For something like the green building program, you may recall that we decided to remove barriers to green building on Mercer Island. That may be a relatively straightforward set of amendments to the code, which would require relatively little time for Planning Commission. If the Planning Commission has time in their schedule late 2019, this might be an easy one to kind of knock off our list to do. It is a bit of a mix. The small cell item is an emerging issue item that I do think we may want to address just to make sure that we're really addressing some of the community concern I've heard in the last year or so related to the T-Mobile small cell sites. That FCC rule, I believe, takes effect mid-January. We have a few thoughts on how to address it in the short term, but the longer-term solution probably bears out a little bit of further conversation.
Can you elaborate on exactly what the parameters around that would be? Because I think it's important here to set the context, which is, this isn't about whether or not, really, we would have smell cells, sorry, small cells. But instead, it's more around
Design.
Design and aesthetics. So, that would largely be the scope.
That's correct, Mayor. The FCC has largely preempted local control around wireless facilities and wireless facility deployment, meaning that it's not really a situation where we can say, no. It's a situation where we can control how it looks. What we have in our regulations right now, I don't think, probably goes quite far enough from what I've heard from the community. And so, that's why I flagged it as something for us maybe to talk about in 2019.
Why are we looking at the International Building Code update? I mean, I realize that the city will have some modifications, maybe, but why would the Planning Commission be doing International Building Code update? When that's more of a kind of a logistical construction?
Yeah, no, fair question. I think it's actually relatively unlikely that the Planning Commission will directly look at the building code. What it does do is take a little bit away from the staff capacity to address other Planning Commission items and may have some council attention associated with it. I do think it's a technical update, so I don't think it's a big item, if you will, for 2020. I think it's probably one of the smaller legislative action items.
And then, can you explain why certain things in the Comp Plan get priority over others? So, certain things show up first before others?
Are you thinking of the green building discussion?
I'm thinking of green building, commuter parking, over pilot program for flexible, single-family.
My, so, this is just the staff proposal. And certainly, this is something where I think the Planning Commission and the City Council can really correct me, if you will, or correct the staff on this item. The reason I proposed it the way I did is that I do anticipate the pilot program discussion to be a larger community engagement exercise. You have two of those, really, probably three of those scheduled for 2019 already. And so, this would add a fourth if I tried to do it in 2019. The three on my radar in 2019 already are the Critical Areas Code update, the Community Facilities zoning discussion, and potentially this sign code discussion. The sign code discussion, I would really encourage us to pursue, because I do think it represents a little bit of a liability for the city to keep it the way it is. So, we could add a fourth. I think it's, the risk we run is a year just like the year we just finished, 2018. And I'll tell you, at least from the staff perspective, that was a very busy year. And I think it's fair to say, I've heard similar comments from Planning Commission, maybe even Council. Other questions that I can address or other thoughts, direction?
Evan, I'm wondering on the Creative Arts District, because this is somewhat entwined with the Arts Council. How do you see that project kind of bouncing between those bodies, or does it? Just talk a bit about how that pans out.
So, I don't know, is the short, honest answer yet, how that will bounce between the Planning Commission and the Arts Council. I think, my recommendation to you is that it is something that I think is more of an Arts Council priority, but may have development regulation aspects that the Planning Commission would need to be involved with, if you will. The actual way that plays out, I don't think we've really explored fully yet. I've attended one conversation with the Arts Council where we explored some of the ideas around creative arts districts. I've put it on our work plan, really, to make sure that we keep track of some of the items we identified in 2018. And to the extent that community planning and development needs to have this on its radar and schedule time with either the Planning Commission or Council, we have it kind of in the list, if you will. And I do think there was some interest by the Arts Council, I believe, in following up on this idea.
There is, but there's also, there is a good amount of public grant money available for it now, which I don't think will be there in 2020. So, to the extent that anybody could try and have the conversation around who needs to do what, when, maybe some of that grant opportunity could be leveraged to do some precursory work ahead of the Planning Commission, while it's available, because I really don't think it's going to be there in 2020.
I'll look into it, see what we can do now.
Thanks. I have a question about the transportation impact fee. I believe we put in a transportation impact fee in 2015 or early 2016, and was curious if you're envisioning that as sort of a periodic update, like every five years or something like that? And if so, does that imply that we might be looking at updating some of the other impact fees?
The short answer is yes. I do think we want to regularly update our impact fees. The school district just updated their impact fees for 2019. Good practice is usually to do it no less than every five years or so. For the original impact fee ordinance we adopted in 2015, early 2016, it did include an annual escalator related to essentially costs increase for construction. But it's also tied to our transportation improvement list, if you will. And as we spend impact fee money on completing projects on that list, we want to make sure we update that list to kind of keep the impact fee whole and valid, which is why I've really aimed at 2020. It does require a little bit of consultant work, and that was part of the service packages that I think the City Council authorized in their budget.
And so, Evan, I see on the slide, it basically says 2019 to 2021. Is there a second slide that gets to 2021?
Pardon me, Mayor, it doesn't. I do, okay, so I do have a couple typos in the slide, and I apologize.
That's okay, I just didn't want to, didn't want to presume. For me, not that it falls specifically under 2021, but the city is due to update its Comp Plan in 2023. And sitting on the GMPC, already, they're starting to outline what the work plan is to be ready to support the different municipalities in that process. So, I think at some point, as we build out what the timeline is, it would be great to capture what the city's going to need to be doing in terms of 2020, 2021, '22, et cetera. So, Planning Commission can help support Council in terms of making sure that we don't find ourselves in a jam-packed final sprint.
Thank you, Mayor. You're absolutely correct. I do have a couple of slides around those items just a little bit lower down in the deck. So, maybe I'll press on for a moment.
So, patience, okay.
So, I did want to note, certainly in Exhibit 1, I've identified a number of items that came either out of our 2018 Conference of Plan Amendments or have otherwise been brought up in my tenure here, that I have on my list of things to do, but I haven't actually scheduled time for yet. actually scheduled time for yet. You can see the creative district ended up on both slides, so I I apologize for that. I I know a couple council members may have noticed already. But park impact fee, animal nuisance code, development agreements, accessibility and aging in place was a a big theme in in some of our twenty eighteen conference of plan amendments. And then there were a list of ideas that were brought up related to town center, I understand, in two thousand fifteen when that code was updated. I'll push on a touch, if I may, to look at our bigger picture. And this is really just a copy of the slide that's in your in your packet. I know it's not legible here on the screen. I thought it was at least useful to help orient everybody to where we are. What you'll see in this slide is I've tried to stagger more or less every three months or pardon me, every three quarters, both some some large projects and some smaller projects starting up before the planning commission. And this is geared a little bit towards maybe that contextual conversation that the mayor was alluding to a moment ago. So the the growth management planning council or commission, pardon me, which is a body of King County, has started to scope out how we will go through our next major update to the conference of plan. That major update is due in twenty twenty-three. So our last update, of course, was two thousand fifteen. The Growth Management Act says we have to do it every eight years. To do that major update, we do a number of regional steps. The first is we prepare what's what's termed an urban development capacity report. Those of you who've been in the business for a little while might be familiar with the older name, which was buildable lands. What this report does is it looks at what is our zone capacity on the island? How many constraints do we have? What is theoretically still out there that could be built under the current zoning? So in a residential neighborhood, you might have the R eight-point-four zoning designation. We literally go through and look at how much land is in that R eight-point-four? How many units do we think could theoretically be built? That's followed by materials put together by the Office of Financial Management, a Washington State office, and they forecast population growth in this area, which translates into a target for Mercer Island at some point in the future, coming from essentially initially the state and then the county for growth on Mercer Island itself. That target is memorialized into the countywide planning policies. City Mercer Island is required by Growth Management Act to be consistent with those countywide planning policies. We have to ratify that growth target probably in late twenty twenty. And then look at our conference of plan and think about how and what type of changes, if we change, are necessary by twenty twenty-three. So contextually, starting late next year, I think we are starting to have more of this regional conversation around what does Mercer Island want to look like longer term again? So the point of the three-year plan, and really even thinking out into year four, year five, is we do want to articulate the vision for the island as far as what is the what is the thing Mercer Island wants at the end of this exercise? That's that's kind of the big picture idea in your conference of plan. We've been doing relatively smaller updates to it. We want to think about that bigger picture discussion as we start to get closer to twenty twenty-three. Any questions around the the regional context here? Any items I've missed?
So there's a mechanism that a city would go through eventually, and they would say they're built out, like Medina Clyde Hill might say, well, look, guys, we're one square mile, we have X number of homes, we're built out. Has anybody in the region declared themselves built out?
Not that I'm aware of. I think there are a number of cities that are thinking along these lines, a number of jurisdictions, and I don't think it's super clear what actually happens when a city declares it's built out.
Okay, the second question is that when you go through this buildable lands, I guess now urban development capacity report, before you go through all the trauma of looking at all your zoning and all of your capacity and theoretically what you could build, when do you first look at sewer, police, fire, schools, roads, ingress egress, and the ability of a community to take any growth beyond its current capacity?
Yeah, it's a it's a great question. I don't think there's a simple answer, but let me let me throw a couple of thoughts if I may add it. I actually attended a regional planning directors' meeting this morning to to talk about exactly this very item. You may know that the Ruckelhaus Institute was asked by the state legislature to essentially do an evaluation of how growth management has worked for the last twenty years. And as part of that process, they've gone all around the state, meeting with various commissioners, council members, and then a few planners. And what they're looking for is essentially what works well in growth management, what doesn't work so well? What kind of problems do we see on the horizon? Resourcing and infrastructure cost is certainly a theme in every conversation I've been part of up until now. Many years ago, when I worked for the city of Issaquah, this was a relatively straightforward question, because many of the cities in the area were willing to accommodate additional growth and and density and weren't really shy about it. Over time, I think the the ease of accommodating that growth has become a little bit harder. Traditionally, I think the thought under growth management is that land use drove many of these conversations. So when I say traditional, I mean when growth management was really conceptualized, if you will, in the the late nineties, where you would have land use perhaps change. So I'll I'll use the handy example of town center. You might decide, we need to accommodate additional growth in town center. That has implications for our infrastructure, our roads, our sewers, our water, water mains, things of that nature. And then the the thought was that you would budget for those capital investment requirements within a certain amount of time, within typically the timeline of your of your conference of plan. What I think the cities are starting to say is that many of those investment opportunities have since disappeared. So the state is no longer investing as heavily in local infrastructures it once did, and that the cities by themselves can't necessarily invest in the infrastructure requirements to meet the level of service expected by their community. Your point on on built out, I think, Deputy Mayor. How that conversation plays out over the next two or three years, I don't know for certain. I do think it's probably in Mercer Island's interest, if I can speak to that, to both plan for, if we're forced to address a growth target, what should that look like? What do we want to have in that situation? And make the case that I think maybe some of the community would like to make, which is really Mercer Island has an aging infrastructure. How do we address that that infrastructure need and the resourcing in that capacity? Pardon me, that the the resourcing to create the capacity that the state is insisting on? I don't think this is probably a local solution at the end of the day. So I I think that's part of what I'm looking for out of that Ruckelhaus Institute analysis, addressing how do we meet these infrastructure needs that that really we can't ask Mercer Island or pick your local city to address by themselves?
So just one follow along, we have an allocation, which was twenty-three hundred units back in the beginning, and it's been amended to. We're not talking about walking away from the additional thousand units or so that are remaining, it would be additive to that. So when I talk about being built out, I don't mean as we are. I mean, plus a thousand more units, which could be a thousand single-family homes, or it could be one apartment building with three hundred and seven hundred new homes. Right, it comes in in different flavors. It could be fifty, eighty U's. I just think that there's a place for that conversation before the machine gets fired up and rolling along, if it can be avoided, to make sure this community wants to support that.
I I think so. I think what we're doing is, so we started some conversations, meaning myself, Evan, and Julie, about getting that timeline first and foremost. What's the work plan that King County is pursuing that's obviously backed by the state, et cetera? Looking at what's going on at the Ruckels House, because that's a statewide initiative. Hopefully, all council members received an invitation this past fall. I know I went to one of those sessions, and it was very interesting because it ranged, you know, feedback from, you know, Tuckwillah up to Everett, different cities with with different issues and opportunities. Equally, at the state level, you've probably picked up on some proposed legislation that would mandate a certain amount of density within the high-capacity transit areas. So there's a number of variables that we're going to have to look at. And those variables are going to be at play coming from the state legislature, they're going to be at play coming from the state, they're going to be at play coming from the county. But I think to Evan's point, and and something I've been at least having the advantage of maybe ten extra days, simply because I think that's roughly when the last GMPC meeting was, is his point being about what, you know, what is Mercer Island's vision? And historically, it truly was about locating any degree of density in the town center. And I think I would be surprised, frankly, if that had changed, but the question is how much density and relative to what pressures that would be coming, either in terms of mandate or strongly encouraged. So I think these exercises that we're going through are going to be super important. I mean, one that jumped out at me was this whole, if you go back just a slide, please? Look, two slides, okay, yeah. So for example, town center, TC three brownstone standards. You know, that I think could be part of a broader conversation about if the community says yes, we want to continue with any degree, let alone more, any degree of density in our town center, how does that play out? And how does that play out particularly when we downzone to a certain portion of the South End?
Mayor, can I build on that just a little bit? I think one of the things in the planning world that we sometimes talk about is, you know, we we steal cliches from other other people, but the missing middle. So we're great about building single family, and we're pretty good at building multifamily. When you look at things like brownstones, smaller houses for aging in place, which I know we've talked about a little bit during the residential development standards, condos, things like that, that are not truly multifamily like what you would expect to see in a town center, but are not necessarily a single family either. In the region, we don't have a lot of examples of high-quality work, work that's really been a benefit and an asset to the community. That may be one area for us to explore more as you're looking at this conversation moving forward. It doesn't solve the infrastructure problem. What it may do is is provide for some acceptability around the residential character of Mercer Island. My my concern is that we can really focus on, we don't want this. We don't want this this growth to come. And I'm happy to go make these arguments as as long as I'm told to do so. The challenge is, at some point, we may lose that conversation, and if we've not had the thoughtful conversation around how do we want Mercer Island to be longer term, we may be kind of on our back foot, we may be unprepared. So I I think probably the the course I would recommend is, we can make arguments about minimizing or even not taking an additional growth target, to the to the Deputy Mayor's point, we're not done with our current one. I think it's also wise for us as a community to talk about what is our vision? Does it include some of these other maybe missing middle housing types? And if so, where and what should they look like and things of that nature? Or maybe there's another solution out there.
I guess I appreciate that point. That's a good thing to think about. I guess my question is, have you heard in the conversations if there's any sort of willingness at the state level to make a change in how they fund infrastructure in the local communities? Because that's really like a big key, right? I mean, are they going to, you know, provide some funding resources for infrastructure? Or are they going to maybe push the growth elsewhere? What are they thinking?
I don't, I have not heard anything from the state. I think globally, not globally, regionally, the planning directors and maybe the planning community in general realizes that even the the regional agencies that are meant to provide some of that infrastructure funding don't have enough. And so that's clearly coming through in the conversations with the Ruckelhaus Institute and even amongst the the more regional coordination amongst directors and and other staff. So I I think we've diagnosed the problem really pretty well. The challenge with something like moving the urban growth boundary east, maybe taking the Snoqualmie Valley, right, is that you you actually may end up exacerbating that problem in terms of regional infrastructure costs, because you're you then need roads and water mains and sewer, which interestingly are actually cheaper to build in a greenfield situation where there's no existing development. It's actually more expensive to retrofit and upgrade the existing systems. So I think there's some temptation to, well, maybe we want to move that growth boundary out. We've conserved that area for a while. I don't know if that's going to be the solution that's actually acceptable regionally or or for the state. Not that I'm trying to solve the state's problems on Mercer Island, but it affects the context of the conversation here.
So if we're talking about this requirement coming in four years, three years, actually, do we have statistics for growth projections and how, you know, how we're going to be? I mean, first of all, we're getting a light rail station in our downtown, which implies that we're going to be asked to take on some burden of the growth, right? Because we, and and how are we? I mean, I guess my question is, how can we get ahead of this train? Not, no, no pun intended. How can we get ahead of this if we're not, if our schedule's already too full? You know what I'm saying? I mean, we need to be able to start thinking, visioning doesn't happen in a weekend.
Is, when you look at the three-year schedule that we have here, we've progressively each year are getting a little lighter, anticipating that we are going to have to talk about this more and more as we get closer to something happening. The projections occur by the Office of Financial Management, Washington State, every five years, the the big projections. They do an annual estimate of population, but the big projection, so the next one is in twenty twenty. That projection is around population growth. What happens at the regional level is that population growth is translated into essentially how many people per household, which turns into a dwelling unit discussion for our growth target. So starting in twenty twenty, I think this will become a much more real conversation because we'll have both this capacity report and some discussion around what do we think Washington State and really the greater Seattle area is going to look like?
I guess what I'm trying to get at is, is it possible to fold into the work that we're doing now? So when we talk about transit parking and all of those things, to begin to establish criteria that defines what the vision, kind of the community-wide vision is, you know, so that as we're doing this work, we're all of a sudden sort of checking off boxes so that when it comes time to have to do the big lift, we've already got a lot of stuff done?
So I I think the short answer is yes. The slightly more useful answer is, I think this is where the planning commission and city council really need to kind of signal to staff. These are things we think are part of the vision for Mercer Island for the next, say, twenty-five years. So I'll pick on one of your conference of plan amendments for twenty nineteen, which is establishing at least the policy basis for level of surface for, level of service, pardon me, for multimodal and non-motorized transportation. If that is truly part of Mercer Island's, say, twenty-five-year vision, that's something that I would ask you to call to the staff's attention when we get to that conversation. We have a pilot program around maybe some flexible design standards for a single family. I don't know exactly how that's going to look, but, you know, that might be a way for us to test out some of these ideas around that that missing middle I was trying to describe a few minutes ago. Maybe we don't want to do that. But I think it's a a way of talking to the staff around, here's a good idea, we want to make sure we flag this for the twenty twenty-three big discussion, if you will, around visioning. And here's one that we're we're doing for the moment, and we're not sure if we like it, if that makes sense. Other questions, thoughts, direction? And of course, we'll try and prompt this as well as we go along.
So I guess my question is just to the rest of the council. Obviously, we as a commission have vetted a good portion of this already in in bringing it to you guys, and and we've met with the mayor and deputy mayor and had some conversation about it. But for the rest of the council, you know, part of this here is just to make sure that we're soliciting the feedback on, you know, whether or not this is being the 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 right tack and direction. Obviously, Evan is representing a body of work that's been done by a number of staff and and with our input as well, but just want to make sure that, I think there's been some good questions, but if there's anything that we've missed or things that we've seen, and if not, then great, it means we've done our job well. But just wanted to make sure that we were looping back to the intent of this, which is to make sure that we're prioritizing the work in the way that you see most fit. We're awesome. Thank you. Good night.
Sorry, done with the growth management conversation?
I, yes, I was going to move on to the next item. Or I or I can be quiet, pardon me, council member. So I did want to talk a little bit about So I did want to talk a little bit about community engagement, which I think is actually the other big piece of this. In 2017, 2018, starting really with the residential development standards, we engaged in a fairly heavy public engagement or public outreach effort. So before I jump into that, let me just describe how I typically approach a planning commission review and then how this scales depending on the complexity of the issue. So typically, we use a three step approach with the planning commission. This may be apparent to everybody else, but I'm just going to get it out there. The first is typically the first meeting, we have an introduction overview of what the issue is, what the problem statement is that we're trying to solve, trying to address. The second meeting, which may actually end up expanding if this is a larger set of issues, tends to be the more detailed review. So we're often asking the question of the planning commission, what additional information do you need from the city staff in order to make your recommendation to the city council? For something like code cleanup, it's usually a fairly straightforward conversation. For something around, say, conference of plan amendments, it's maybe a more complex conversation. And then we have, of course, our public hearing and our recommendation from the planning commission to the city council. And then we probably all familiar with the process from there. In 2017, 2018, really that second step, the detail review, is the step that expanded on a number of these projects. So in the residential development standards, for example, we had a consultant come in and support the community engagement. We had a number of community meetings. We did increased notice, we did a social media push. We, not so much with residential development standards, but with the conference of plan amendments this last year, we ended up rolling out that Let's Talk platform. And, you know, we really try and do this for the larger projects as we identify it. So in 2018, I think we started off maybe with one approach for some of the conference of plan amendments, and we've tried to shift midstream as it became apparent that there was more community interest in some than we had initially anticipated. Moving forward into 2019 and beyond, I think we are going to try and use a similar set of community engagement tools and a similar approach. Meaning that for things that the staff diagnoses as best it can and looking to planning commission and council for guidance, those things that we think are relatively straightforward or smaller legislative initiatives, we would tend to use the simplified public outreach process, which means we're typically using more of a three meeting approach with the planning commission, a true three meeting approach. And we may not have as much community outreach as we do on a larger initiative. So smaller in this case, I mean, things like code cleanup, right? Relatively straightforward code amendments. Larger processes, so maybe the community facilities zoning discussion or the critical areas zoning discussion, pardon me, critical areas discussion. We try and ramp it up and have more opportunities for public engagement and public input to the planning commission and just more touches, if you will. Sometimes, we don't always diagnose this correctly on the staff side, and that's where you see kind of this mid-process shift. So certainly the conversation around community facilities and the zoning designation there is one of those examples we've had recently. What's a little interesting to me is that we also have a critical areas ordinance that we're reviewing at the moment. Critical areas ordinance, I would have expected to have more public engagement, more public interest than it actually has. So we misdiagnosed some of this both ways. We are doing the beefed up public engagement process for critical areas. We certainly aren't trying to hide anything, but we're not getting quite as much community interest as I would have expected. Does that make sense for the community engagement approach? Any thoughts, guidance, wisdom? I'm doing it all wrong?
Well, I mean, I would just, I would just say to me, kudos for bringing this forward, because I think the point is, some of the consistent comments are, is the community needs a longer ramp up period, meaning a heads up that issues are coming forward. I think there's a sense that perhaps they're recognizing it when it's already at a point of deep deliberation and debate. So they'd like to have a longer ramp. The second piece is, as you said, with regard, for example, to the critical areas, I think, you know, everything that I heard was that we would probably be seeing more community engagement than we have to date. That isn't to say that it wouldn't come now, which would put it somewhat mid-process. So the, you know, the hope is that we have the flexibility and the capability to amend our process, to be able to address that, rather than stay a course where we perhaps didn't predict or predict the community interest the way it's surfaced.
I think we are trying certainly to be adaptive around this whole portion of the process, if you will. Allison is really kind of overseeing a lot of our community engagement and community outreach, sometimes in the background. You know, where we start to see more interest in the community, either on Nextdoor or Let's Talk or something of that nature, I would expect that we would try and bump up our outreach. We no longer do have that consultant resource, so we are doing this in-house entirely at this point. And I'm just noting that so we're all aware.
So one recommendation I might have is that you add it to the city manager report when you're halfway through. So I know I don't follow your agendas as much as I probably should, and I apologize for that. So maybe hearing once in a while at the council meeting what you guys are working on, that would be helpful for me and probably for members of our community that feel like they don't know what's happening.
Thank you. Other aspects of community engagement, public outreach, thoughts that I can take to heart and try and implement?
Thanks. I think the Let's Talk gets at this a bit, but I think the really big thing is being able to respond to citizens, not just with their questions, but sort of the feasibility of their suggestions. A lot of suggestions come through, and I think people think there's nowhere for those to go or to be heard, or they don't know, you know, how to kind of find out if they're going to, you know, be effective for whatever. I think Let's Talk can do that, but it strikes me as it's just an enormous process to keep up with all that, especially if it ramps up and gets used the way we hope it does. But I think it's a good start, and if there are other tools, I'd be really interested in hearing about them.
Verna, I think we are interested in trying to find different ways to efficiently address lots of comments. To me, Let's Talk is great, because honestly, when Allison or Nicole or I post a response on there, everybody can see the original question and everybody can see at least the city's response. And frankly, sometimes people comment on the response and tell us what we did correctly or not. Other thoughts? No? And that's really what I had for the evening for us to talk through, unless there are additional items that the council or the commission would like me to respond to.
I have a question. So I've been doing the planning commission now for two and a half, two and a half years, something like that. And I'm still trying to get my head around how things move from idea to regulation. I mean, I know that it's a pretty straightforward process, but it seems like the timeline is just geologic. And I'm wondering if we can figure out a way to streamline it, make it faster.
Can you give me an example to help me understand?
Well, taking something from the comp plan, for instance, and moving it from an idea like, you know, well, you know where this is going, the demonstration project, moving it from there into real regulation. You know, it's, it feels like to me that sometimes it's unnecessarily complex, and I'm wondering if there's a way for us to simplify it.
Well, can we talk about that specific one for a second? I don't, so the work plan that I've been trying to describe to you tonight is a recommendation from the staff, right? So at the end of the day, of course, the planning commission, the city council, to the extent I've gotten it wrong, should correct me. The thought behind the work plan in 2019 was really the one I described to you earlier, which is, I do think this community, having been through that residential development standards process, some people are already reading that pilot program as code for something bad, whatever that bad thing might be, something undesirable to Mercer Island. I don't think that was the intent by the city council or the planning commission, but I think for the community to hear that, they need more community engagement. And that just takes time and resource and all of that, your time, staff time, things of that nature. All that said, we could certainly take an approach at it in 2019. If we go that route, I think we need to pull something off the 2019 work plan, just so we don't all go collectively kind of crazy trying to deal with this amount of work. The more global question, why are we doing maybe comprehensive plan amendments and then code amendments? I think there's probably a couple of parts to that answer. I do believe that the best way to figure out a good long-term policy is to agree on what we're trying to achieve with a specific discussion and then figure out how to get there. Sometimes we can do that all at the same time. When I joined the city of Mercer Island, two and a half years ago now, I had a couple of different conversations with folks who kind of illustrated some of the things they didn't like about the process that occurred in previous years. And those often turned into, well, we were shown something that was essentially a fait accompli, and then it was just pushed through, and we didn't get a chance to weigh in on the process. Or we were shown something that was kind of a fait accompli, and we didn't like it, so we pushed back enough that it wasn't pitched through and we did a whole new process again. The way I diagnosed that is that there had not been sufficient conversation around what the problem was we were trying to solve, such that we all agreed as to the problem statement and then the cure, the regulation. So the approach has been intentionally figure out what is the problem statement, what is the thing we're trying to achieve, what is the vision, and then how do we get there? So that it is an intentionally more thoughtful, more...
What about when things are, like last week?
Could you speak in?
Oh, sorry. Last week, I spoke to council in a rather emotional plea about something that I feel is a real emergency in our community, which is road safety. And I'm wondering how we can move those issues forward faster, you know? I mean, how can we start to address this? We're going to go through the multimodal transportation comp plan, and then, you know, two or three years down the road, then we'll start to implement the multimodal tran, I mean, but right now, we have real problems. We have real dangers on the road. And how are we going to address those and do them expeditiously in a way that is thoughtful? I mean, you know, I saw the 40th Street project take place, but that was also several years in the making. I mean, I think that my daughter was in kindergarten when we were starting to talk about complete streets and 40th corridor, and now she's in eighth grade. So that's kind of where my concern is. When we have real emergencies like we do with something like that, I'd like to be a little bit more nimble, I think, in responding to them.
Yeah, I think the other observation I'll just make is, the approach really matters on this kind of thing. So really what we talk about on planning commission and city councils in these kinds of contexts are maybe more policy and then development regulation, development implementation. The specific issue I think you're mentioning or that you spoke to the council about that evening, might almost be more of a capital type improvement in its concept. That, to me, is squarely within the council's authority and really isn't the place, you wouldn't normally initiate that kind of conversation with a planning commission as its starting point. The challenge with capital facilities, as we know, is there is a resource component, and we do still want to make sure that we have appropriate engineering and kind of a long-term game plan. So in my experience, the traffic engineers for many years in the city of Spanish, before Mercer Island, would come marching down the hall anytime I opened my mouth around traffic engineering and scolded me because I'm not an engineer and apparently practicing engineering without license is a no-no. The, but often my temptation would be, well, we have a traffic problem at this intersection, why don't we put it around about? Why don't we put in a stop sign? Why don't we think about traffic calming things like speed bumps, roundabouts, things of that nature? Which I think we're all familiar with just by being around in this area. The point that was consistently made is actually those are very technically designed features, and if they're put in at the wrong time or in the wrong spot, they actually decrease traffic safety. So to me, even the capital facilities discussion warrants a good thoughtful approach.
It's the 25 year plan that you've been talking about, but there's certain things that we kind of need to get a jumpstart on.
Yeah.
I think, you know, there's an entry point, and I think in the context of council and the planning commission, it is about policy and code. And in the context of this particular traffic situation that you feel, I feel like we do have the policy and the code in place, in which case I would look to the city manager and say, what is the right point of entry? Meaning, is it, you know, is it a safe routes to school because it's right near West Mercer? Is it something, you know, that our city engineers and Patrick have been aware of or not? And looking at it, does it need to go into the TIP? Or is this something where, you know, some reflective lights or signage could work? But I don't, I think what I would do is I would make the distinction between whether or not we've got the policy in place, which would be this forum, which is arguably, you know, more long-term, long-ranging, and I would say comprehensive in the context of the comprehensive plan versus, you know, based on the changes in traffic due to the closure of the center roadways, we have more traffic on West Mercer, and we therefore need to take a look at some of those particular hotspots together, even maybe with the school districts. So depending on the particular issue, I think you find a different point of entry and a different degree of complexity, engineering and cost. Because the other, you know, the other tough thing that we spent some time, you know, talking to the chair and the vice chair about as well as city staff is, is the real resource constraints that we have. It's not just dollars, but it's also people hours, you know? And there's always going to be a painful prioritization process that goes on. So not to say that this isn't a priority, just not sure if that one would really be, if I'm honest, maybe the best example of what this forum or what these two groups would be looking at for a quick, quicker response time. So I guess, you know, both the council and the planning commission, the, some of the guiding principles here were to make sure that we were, you know, doing some of the stuff we needed to do based on the carryover from 2018, you know, carryover from residential code, you know, what we're looking at in light of some of the opportunities we have with regard to the sound transit settlement agreement, et cetera, et cetera. Is there, are there things that we're missing? I mean, if we were just to say, we're going to whiteboard for a minute, are there topics that you think over the next one to two or even three years, that you would suggest get put on a list to see if they don't rise in urgency or diminish? I mean, is there anything that you'd like to add? Bruce?
Forgive me, I'm sort of taking a step back, because a couple of things you've just said have reminded me of the sound transit settlement and the dollars available through that. And we've been talking a bit about non-motorized and multimodal transportation, but that's a slightly different slice at things than what I and some others have talked about, which is the potential to use some of that sound transit settlement for last mile solutions within the community. And it's going to beg the question of, what is the process we move through to arrive at a shared vision of what that might look like? And how does that mesh with the currently existent deadlines we have with sound transit? I've contended that I believe there's room for us to renegotiate the deadlines on that with sound transit to extend that timeframe out, but that has not been done and we haven't, we have no assurance at this point that that's possible. So it does, at this point, beg the question of, what's the timing that we should be following such that we don't find ourselves approaching the end of that time period and suddenly going, uh-oh, we haven't figured this out and now we're in trouble?
I think I would call on Julie, because this came up in the context of potential, it council, we've discussed this a few times at arguably the 10,000 foot level, but putting it on the agenda for the planning session.
That's right, mayor, exactly. So we have done an inventory of our existing policies around pedestrian, bicycle, motorist safety issues. And so we've done that inventory, and now we're kind of looking at drafting some guiding principles that we'd like to share and discuss with the city council at your planning session. So something that guides kind of recommendations that would come back to council for your consideration, rather than just kind of what's the flavor of the month? Is it scooters this month? Is it drones? I don't know. But it's, the point is to have some framing so you can... I don't know. But it's, the point is to have some framing so you can agree high-level what your policy direction is, and then anything that comes forward must adhere to that high-level criteria. So that is something, there is roughly over $5 million devoted to really those impacts centered around, um, ped, bicycle, motorist safety. So quite a bit of funds, but as you know, um, that can be swallowed up in an instant depending upon what you determine you want to spend those funds on. Um, and there is some ability to shift some funding within those buckets of sound transit, um, categories, but, and that, and the idea there being, again, not to do it haphazardly or capriciously, but to actually do it planfully, thoughtfully, with some high-level guidance. So, so we've done a, an inventory of our comp plan, our bike-ped plan, and again, our policies to see are those policies kind of the place to start in guiding some of those dollars. And we're hoping to bring that, um, a draft to you. Um, our planning session schedule is February 1st and 2nd.
So when I, um, look at, uh, item four on, on this, that says goals and policies related to non-motorized and multimodal transportation, that is intended to be a placeholder for, uh, specifically this conversation about, uh, allocation of that money. I, and that's, and that's fine. I, I tend to think of it more as last mile solutions. How are we going to move people from home to transit and back again? But it certainly is both, and, uh, so having it labeled this way is just fine, as long as we understand that it, that it's more than that.
Yeah, I, I guess I'll just add to that a touch. I think the, the multimodal, non-motorized discussion was in addition to that, uh, sound transit money discussion, so they're, they're complementary to each other, but not. I don't think you need to wait on this complan amendment to take action on your sound transit monies.
So Evan, I guess, um, we're, we're at 7:15, so I think the question that I have is exhibit two that's in front of us, we've got a calendar, it's more or less the, the planning schedule. When I look at it, I see, of course, the remainder of 18 is quite full. We've got January, arguably February, March, April. So you're feeling pretty confident in ter- or comfortable in terms of the work plan, at least for those first five months as laid out here?
I, I am, uh, Mayor, in, in part because we have heavily advertised some of those work plan items to the community, and I, I really want to try and keep us to schedule. Uh, you'll note that it drops off fairly significantly in June, and then June on is frankly my best guess as to how things might lay out at the moment. The planning commission and, and staff had a, a conversation, um, at our last planning commission meeting last week, and I think this planning schedule might be something that I'm, I'm more inclined to put onto their radar moving forward, so we all have a good picture of what the next six to 12 months looks like. I think that was actually a request by one of the commissioners.
So I think what we're hearing then is the extent to which council and/or commissioners have a sense of, you know, it, let's just say, in, in six weeks, you know, something comes to mind in terms of a reprioritization of some of those maybe items, or there's a new something that comes up. What we would really be looking at is amending the second half of the, the calendar year, the second half of the
Yes.
year's agenda, as well as even potentially going into 2021. So please, you know, it's, it's not a do or die tonight. It means that the, the list remains at least somewhat flexible and open, but it won't remain that way forever. I know you guys have seen that happen, you've seen things really add on to your list quite quickly and substantially.
Thank you for that.
It's, it's been noticed, we'll do our best. But otherwise, a- any final comments, any, anything that any council members or planning commissioners really wanted to share with the group and obviously share with the community? New Year's resolutions?
I was thinking a little bit about sort of our discussion about the infrastructure, and I, I thought about a little bit how to, one way to approach it, at least sort of tangentially, is think about where you have sort of a sweet spot of efficiency in different infrastructure types. Like I, I think about, you know, if you think about bus service headways, there's a certain number of units per acre that give you 15-minute headways, which is sort of the minimum you need for actual transit usage. You know, 50 mile per hour on the highway is sort of optimal throughput. So there, there are optimal sweet spots. I, I know about more in transportation. I'm, I don't know as much about other utilities. I'm wondering if there are, and not that that would have to be our guiding principle, but it could be information that would help people, um, you know, as we shape this kind of conversation about how we're growing. What, you know, what does that potentially look like? You know, we don't want to make one decision that could be sort of impossible from the infrastructure funding standpoint. But if that kind of research is available, I think that could be helpful when we start that conversation.
That's a great, uh, point. Thank you.
I'll just, uh, conclude in, in first thanking my fellow commissioners for the last several years. It's, it actually goes back even when I was on the design commission, probably three or four years. For the council members that have been around, you know how much work, as a community, we have gone through, not just the, the commission, but the council and, and even the design commission. So first thank you guys for sticking in through all of this. And for the community members that have been involved in participating in that process as well, because we, as you've heard us tonight say, there's been, uh, certainly some growing pains in understanding how to engage through some of our processes and the speed that we've needed to respond, and the breadth at which we've need to cover topics. And that has been painful in some regard, and how we engage with some of the, uh, some of the public process. And I think it's worth noting that, yes, we have tackled a tremendous, uh, body of work. We're not unique in the challenges that we have experienced that precipitated a lot of this. And so, um, I think if you look at the news and you read about some of the, uh, struggle that the communities in Seattle are having with the pressures of growth, and the way that they've had to respond to a number of the same things that we've had to in the east side cities. I think despite some of the things that we feel very acutely from a pain perspective, we've actually dealt with really well, and I'm proud to sit by the people that I work with in service to you all on the council and the community. In the work that we've done, we're going to continue to learn as we move forward and improve our process and how we, uh, engage everybody. But, uh, it really is a, a privilege, and I think we still should be proud of, uh, the work that we've done. So, thanks.
Anyone else? Well, that, thank you. We appreciate your time tonight. We look forward to the partnership in the coming months, and, uh, council, we will recess until 7:30.
I'm
Well, thank you and good evening. Council has already completed a couple of different items of business. First of all was an executive session and then followed by a joint planning session with our Planning Commission. With that behind us, we now move into more or less the regular part of business and we will proceed then with appearances. And appearances is the opportunity for anyone to speak to the council on any item. When it's your turn to address council, please do provide your name and preferably your address. Be audibly into the podium microphone. And please limit your comments to three minutes. The expanded rules are on the back door. So with that, do we have our roster tonight? We do. Okay.
Janet Pritchard, Dwight Schaefer, Jason King, Jeanette Delgado and Jessica Green.
Hello, council. I'm Janet Pritchard with Republic Services. Republic Services offers you a three-year interim contract so you can take the time necessary to unpack sustainability realities and rate impacts in a long-term agreement. You are in receipt of our offer. Four points to ponder regarding sustainability and rates. We are delighted to hear that the city's sustainability goals are front and center with the new solid waste collection contract. It nests perfectly with Republic's status as the region's number one recycler. As you are contemplating a partner for the future, consider King County's own data. Let's look at the two teams who are poised to serve Mercer Island. So looking at the average landfill diversion score for the franchise cities in this market, Republic Services local city scores an average of 62%. And yes, Mercer Island is above average. The other hauler's average score is 58%. While the other hauler's philosophy might be zero waste, the data disagree. We are unsure which sustainability goal you are trying to solve by putting one-third more trucks on the road and what climate issue is benefited by introducing 20,000 new petroleum-based plastic carts to the island. Third point, we understand that engaging with the city more fully regarding sustainability outreach and contract compliance is a desired outcome. We can accomplish that goal with you while leveraging our partnership with Kids Quest Children's Museum. However, if you elect not to accept that level of partnership, Republic would back out 3.5% of our proposed rate increase. Speaking of rate increases, your revised agenda document did not discuss the significant rate increase commercial customers will experience with the long-term contract option. We are happy to design a rate package with you that provides greater rate relief for residents, but which would also add burden to businesses and multifamily residents. We would also include added risk-sharing recycling commodity program if that's something you determine you want for your rate payers. We urge you to accept Republic Services interim contract, which gives you the chance to explore what is needed for true sustainability outcomes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Welcome.
My name is Dwight Schaefer. I live at 6958 96th Avenue Southeast. I've been a Mercer Island resident for about 32 years. Our most transparent city council is tone deaf and did not get the message. No increases without efficiency improvements. Since Prop One went down to overwhelming defeat after inspiring a record turnout, the city council sought to get their money from hidden garbage taxes. And the taxes, anything that can be used for the general fund not specific to a particular source. And they did this without a vote. A franchise fee payable to the general fund, but not separately identified in the billing. It could be increased at any time by the city. Diverting the revenues from recyclables to the general fund instead of continuing to use those revenues to offset the cost of garbage services as done today. Trash cans currently serviced by city employees are now going to be covered by the new service provider. However, there's no FTE reduction. That may be a wise thing, but you need to reduce the corresponding city headcount. There's $35,000 kickback to the city for winning the contract. Additionally, the city inflates garbage costs by insisting that garbage haulers use vehicles no older than 2018 that are all freshly painted the same and which use compressed natural gas or electric. The council should reject the proposed contract. Instead, request a new bid that one provides no payments to the city. Continue to offset the cost of service with revenue from recycled revenues. Request the lowest cost to Mercer Island residents without preferential treatment. And that requires bidders provide alternatives and associated costs instead of dictating the solutions. Right now, you're forcing a solution on them without any idea what the cost is. I fully expect the city council to ignore this request and nominate a rubber stamp that is opposed to the will of the large majority who voted against Prop One.
Thank you. Next. Who would be number three on the list?
Jason King.
Is it me? Is it me? Okay, thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you. Council members, city staff and citizens. This morning, I went out and did my annual season's greeting and gave my gratitude in an envelope to Mike, our longtime Republic Services driver in Mercerwood. He has driven a solid waste truck here on the island for over 20 years and most of the past 15 on our street. By the way, Republic and its predecessors, Rabanco and Allied Waste, have served our island well for 35 years. Background. I led Puget Sound Energy's federal, state and local government relations program for about two decades. My work included franchise agreements with every single local jurisdiction we served. I know a good process versus a deficient process. And let me tell you tonight, this was a deficient process that brought forward the proposed agreement with the new provider here on the island. Disclosure. As a private consultant, I assisted Republic Services in 2008 when their contract came up for renewal. That agreement was brought to the city council and received near unanimous approval. Only one dissent. The final agreement was both generous to the city and fair while including many favorable mandates for the citizens. As an unpaid and totally voluntary retired citizen today, I have a few points and observations for your consideration. The hasty process that could end tonight displays a very real lack of full and open process and has brought forward a seriously flawed agreement for your consideration. Simply put, what is on the table will not serve the citizens of Mercer Island well. Tossing out Republic and signing an agreement with Recology will have major implications for the city and its citizens. First, we don't need every week pickup for both recycling and yard waste. Adding 33% more trucks on our roads is wrong-headed and ill-advised, not environmentally oriented, and will cause added traffic and safety problems. Has anyone really considered the added implications of adding one-third more garbage trucks on the current traffic driving alongside school buses? Kids walking to school without sidewalks on my street? Bike riders adding to traffic congestion and pollution? Has anyone even looked at that? Second, Republic is a large company with nationwide resources and a strong reputable history. They have always offered community support, including here on the island when there's been a major emergency or winter storm. They have the ability to respond quickly if a major disaster hits like an earthquake. Third, the top-of-the-line primarily new Republic Truck Fleet brought forward in the last contract averages only five years of age. Lastly, Republic has served our city very well for decades. Rolling the dice on another company is taking a huge risk. And really, I urge you to vote no tonight on this agreement. Go back to the negotiating table and bring forward something that is better for the citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Jeanette Delgado and I am a Shoreline resident. And I'm talking on behalf of Recology King County. I have been a Recology customer for more than 10 years and I am consistently impressed with the service they provide. I am always happy to be able to speak with one of their local customer service representatives who are familiar with my neighborhood and sometimes even with my street. In my experience, Recology drivers are cautious, considerate and polite, waving for children that live on my block and never, ever leave stray trash behind after they finish collecting. Recology exemplifies what it means to be a community partner and I am happy to have the opportunity to speak on their behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. If people could go ahead and line up, that would be great.
Jessica Green, Bessica Becky Bronstein and Kevin Kelly.
Welcome.
Hi. My name is Jessica Lynn Diamond Green. I am Mercer Island High School graduate from the class of 2003. I'm also currently the Development Director at Bike Works. Bike Works is a nonprofit that's in Columbia City and serves youth and adults in southeast Seattle and King County. We were founded in 1996 and we promote the bicycle as a vehicle for change to empower youth and build resilient communities. We've been teaching bike mechanics, providing after-school programs for youth in the part of the county where there are largest health disparities and fewest access to after-school programming and healthy activities. And we do all of our programming by sourcing used bicycles, fixing them up and giving them back to the community. In 2010, a Recology CleanScapes driver Rodney noticed how many bikes were being thrown in the trash and actually started a partnership between Recology and Bike Works. And now, to date, Recology has provided over 20,000 bikes, donating them to our programs and helping our organization grow. Before our partnership with Recology, we sourced at most 1,500 bikes in a year. And to date this year alone, we have received over 6,000 bicycles that have allowed us to provide free bikes to families in need, sell bikes at an affordable price in our used bike shop in Columbia City and teach youth and adults how to repair their own bikes, including job readiness training programs for youth who need job skills to find employment. So I'm here here on behalf of Bike Works to just express my gratitude for the community partner that Recology is sourcing bikes from all over the region and funneling them as an important resource into a part of the county that is often overlooked and marginalized. We serve communities of color. We serve children from immigrant families. We serve low-income families. And couldn't do this without our partnership with Recology. We've also sent our staff to Recology for a field trip to learn about recycling and to meet their resident artist who turns trash into artwork. And the signs that they post on the shipping containers at the transfer stations that advertise free bike recycling to Bike Works is actually a really important advertising mechanism for us to get the word out to anyone who's going to the dump that bikes are a valuable resource that can do real good in the community. So I hope that you will choose Recology CleanScapes as a partner, not only for sustainability goals, but also for social justice reasons because I think the two are interconnected. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Becky Bronstein and I'm a former teacher and currently the program coordinator with a statewide nonprofit called Washington Green Schools. We guide and support students to be leaders for the environment all across the state of Washington. We're in over 600 schools across 12 different programs. And with just a staff of seven people, we rely heavily on our local partners to make sure that students can live and learn in a greener and healthier community. And this speaks to Recology's work, their enthusiasm, their intentionality and their passion to educate their community as well as provide them with well-comprehensive service. Recology has helped us with field trips to the South Transfer Station. They've assisted with educational activities. They've also helped us with teacher trainings where they teach teachers around the community about proper waste and recycling sorting and how teachers can incorporate that into their classroom curriculum as well as their green teams. They promote certification, which is a program of ours for schools to become green-certified schools. Right now, we have close to 200 certified schools all across the state, which is largely in part because of Recology's efforts. They also help us conduct waste audits. To become a certified green school, we require schools to conduct a waste audit and we always turn to Recology to carry this out. It is our most popular category for schools to certify in and that is largely in part to us knowing that we have a local partner who we can count on. This is this local expert that we can count on to serve our schools no matter where they are throughout the county. This is thanks to their services, their support. And most of all, I can personally speak to their knowledge, their true passion to educate and serve their local community. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor Bertland and members of the council. My name is Kevin Kelly. I'm the general manager for Recology King County. Last week, you heard from several members of the community testifying to the meaningful and lasting impacts Recology has in the communities we serve. Tonight, you've heard from additional community members reiterating this sentiment and providing new and distinct experiences with Recology. This process demonstrates the dedication of our employee owners, our commitment to a world without waste and our shared values with the city of Mercer Island. I want to thank you for your careful consideration of the proposal Recology presented following the recommendation of an evaluation committee that included both staff and members of the Mercer Island community. Over the past week, you have had time to lean into some of the questions brought forth during our last meeting and take advantage of this unbiased, transparent and fair process on behalf of the residents of Mercer Island. Tonight, I encourage council to take action to ensure a smooth and effective transition for Mercer Island residents and businesses. It is imperative to provide ample time and dedicate the necessary resources to this transition. This is an important time in the waste and recycling industry and Recology is eager and ready to partner with the city of Mercer Island to work toward shared sustainability goals and make meaningful progress toward our waste zero vision. Thank you again for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Deb, do we have any other? Any other people? Anybody else who's here for public appearances? If so, please do come down.
Hello. My name is Christine Schaefer and I'm a Mercer Island resident. I'm a single residential property owner and I pay a ton of property taxes here. We just voted down Prop One and now we're hearing a bunch of propaganda and we're going to have a 29% increase in our garbage collection because you guys don't want to listen to Prop One. And I don't understand this. Are you going to listen to propaganda? And I know all this ecology and green stuff is fine, but I am not in favor at all of a 29% increase in our garbage collection. And I am a resident and I know there are a lot of residents out here who think the same thing. And I'm tired of the single residential property owner taking the hit on everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here for public appearances? Welcome.
Gary Robinson, 6026 East Mercer Way. You know, I hadn't intended to speak and I had commented to one of the city council members about this, but reading what I read, and I've read everything, including the contract, you know, it really seems to me that this is not about Recology or Republic, but it's actually more about other things. Now, I worked and retired from the aerospace industry. And if what I understand to be correct about the way you're going about this and the sustainability quotient that you're going to get back from Recology, in the aerospace industry, we might be talking to a judge. This really gets to the point of kickbacks. The other thing that it really strikes me is this council seems to have a lot in common with the legislatures of Wisconsin and Michigan. Both of them are trying to thwart the will of the people. And certainly from my perspective, and I may not have all the data, but I did make a conscientious effort to read through it. But it seems to me like you are seeking to implement Prop One through the sustainability kickback from Recology. All of that does not really sound like it is becoming to this council at all and is really deserving of more transparency to the citizens.
Thank you. Last call. Welcome.
I'm a resident, you know me.
Could you please, just for the record, go ahead and state your name?
Lloyd Gilman.
Thank you.
Mercer Island resident.
Mercer Island resident, single-family homeowner. The deal is not Proposition 1. The deal is, take the time. I had some wonderful thoughts. It gets down to, you have the opportunity to suspend the decision and give yourselves time to think, or to reflect on what the citizens have to say, and what is beneficial to them and yourselves.
Thank you. Anyone else? With that, we're going to go ahead and conclude appearances. We'll move on now to regular business. Our first item of business is Agenda Bill 5514, a new solid waste contract. And for that, we welcome Public Works Director Jason Kettner.
Good evening, Jason Kettner, Public Works Director. Thank you. Just some quick background, as you recall, at the December 4th council meeting, staff and our consultant Jeff Brown, we're here to talk about the new proposed contract. Just a gentle reminder that the existing contract with Republic Services or Incumbent has currently provided service to Mercer Island since 1981, and the current contract is set to expire in September of next year. We, in June, we briefed the council about our options in front of us. We originally reached out to Republic to explore a contract extension. Given the volatility in markets, the offer was declined, and recommended for a three-year option, or go through an RFP, competitive RFP process. Giving the timing associated with the negotiations and being up against the clock to get a contract in place, the city would move forward with the competitive RFP process. That RFP closed in September of this year, and we actually received four competitive offers from Cedar Grove, Recology, Republic, and Waste Management. As you heard in public testimony tonight, Republic did send the council a new alternative to consider that was received on Thursday, December 6th via email to the council. This was an unsolicited proposal made outside of that formal RFP process. It did include a three-year extension of the existing contract with Republic Services, but the specific terms of that actual contract still need to be negotiated. In that email, there was a proposed rate increase of 17.5%. It adds a monthly garbage collection service for the super diverters. The challenge with that model under the existing contract is that the super diverters need, it's advantageous for the super diverter to have month or weekly compostables and weekly recycling services. Under the existing contract, those two commodities still remain every other week serviced. Additionally, they offered $150,000 in education outreach services, which you heard tonight from Ms. Pritchard, and they offered to reimburse the city the cost of the procurement. It's important to note that that requirement was part of the RFP for all proponents under the new contract. Republic Services, the three-year extension does not include new trucks or collection carts. Recall that December 4th council meeting, we outlined the reason and the rationale as to why we needed new carts and new toters. In order to set the playing field equal across all proponents, we established new collection carts and new toters. In addition, as you heard, the average lifespan of the collection fleet is 10 years, and so at the end of that 10-year cycle, these trucks often are leaking, they need ongoing additional maintenance costs, and so to set the playing field right, to actually, set the playing field right and actually get new trucks on the road, that was included as the base contract. Republic's offer does not include new trucks, so we'd still be using the existing fleet for another three years. It also does not include the commodity market adjustment, which is estimated to be $200,000 per year. Again, that was a requirement of the base RFP, and it limits the city's options for future procurement. So if we extend a three-year contract with Republic, essentially we'll be starting an RFP process immediately for that new procurement, because as you heard in June, the expected RFP timeline is really two years. So getting a new contract in place, we'll be starting that process immediately. Given the fact that we just went through a competitive RFP process, and if we went this route, the chances and likelihood of getting four proponents to propose on the next RFP are slim and unlikely, because we've actually impacted the integrity of the process. So what's the benefit and projected outcome for those other proponents? Republic's rate, so just getting into the rate comparison a little bit, we use a 32- or 35-gallon cart for comparison. Again, this is included as an exhibit in the Agenda Bill. Their proposed rate at 17.5% is $32.39 per month for that 32- or 35-gallon cart. Recology's contract presented to the council on December 4th, as staff recommended, is $36.06. That's that 29% average increase. If you pull out the weekly recycling component, which is staff's recommendation, but was an alternative to be included in the base RFP, that's a savings of $2.78. If you pull out the commodity value, which the council has an option to pass that back to the residents rather than the city collect that revenue, that's $2.40. And if you adjust the city's 3.5% city sustainability fee and excise tax, that's another $1.10. Where you end up is, Recology's proposed contract is actually 8% increase compared to the existing 2019 Republic rate. That's for a 32- and 35-gallon cart in comparison. That's the best apples-to-apples comparison we can give you between the two proposals. Recology's contract, this still remains staff's recommendation. In the new contract with Recology, you're getting a 10-year contract plus the two, so you have, the city has the sole option to extend the contract two years for potential of a 12-year contract. The base contract, again, the RFP was to split the most competitive pricing and best proposals, includes new trucks at the beginning of the contract cycle. It also includes the new standardized containers that the city will own at the end of that process, so the next city council that goes through a procurement process, that's one less thing they have to worry about, and provides flexibility in the RFP process 10 years from now or 12 years from now. It includes weekly collection of compostables, and then it still includes the weekly service to city-owned facilities, including the thrift shop and park facilities. Still provides support for up to three city-sponsored public events, such as Leap for Green, Summer Celebration, Seafair, those types of city-sponsored events. It includes collection of 34 receptacles or containers in the town center. It does include the new 32-gallon monthly cart service option for the diverters. We do have weekly compostable collection included in this base contract. It also comes with a local customer call center with a dedicated phone-in for Mercer Island customers. They have a significantly high customer satisfaction rating and improved diversion rates. What you could consider tonight are alternatives. So staff's recommendation on December 4th was to include weekly recycling at $2.78 per month. Other communities such as Iskwa, Kirkland, Bellevue, Snoqualmie, Sammamish, North Bend, they're all weekly recycling. This is an alternative the council could choose to pull out of that recommended contract. Additionally, the commodity adjustment mechanism equates to $2.40 per month. As proposed on December 4th, it was intended for it to come back to the city, where the city would bear that risk. Alternatively, the council could pass that directly to the ratepayers, so they bear the entire risk of that mechanism, whether it's good or bad. Alternatives that are already included in the Recology contract that, to me, are a no-brainer, includes the Honcall Bulky Waste. That was an alternative to the RFP process. Under Recology's contract, it's a known net cost increase. It's just an additional service provided by Recology. Additionally, the sustainability adjustment fee, as proposed on December 4th, it was set at 3.5%. As you heard that evening, most other regional cities employ a fee typically at a higher rate than what's proposed for you tonight. Alternatively, the council could choose to adjust that rate, up or down. On the right, you see there the other Recology-operated cities and the average rate for that sustainability fee or administrative fee. Mercer Island's at 3.5, the average is 9%. So finally, staff still recommends ordering the contract to Recology Services. The contract would start October 1st of 2019. Reminder, there would be no CPI adjustment until January 1st of 2021. The plan will be to come back to the council in early 2019 to talk about the transition implementation plan. That's a requirement of the RFP, and something that, as we transition to a new service provider, we will all be very interested in to make sure the transition is smooth. So the motion before you tonight is to authorize the city manager to execute the comprehensive contract for garbage, recyclables, and compostable collection services with Recology King County. And again, myself and Jeff Brown are here to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Jason. Council, questions?
Thanks.
Benson.
With respect to the commercial rates, so we've heard comments that Recology's commercial rates are the highest of the floor that were proposed. Can you just discuss that? I mean, obviously, the rates that we were provided are kind of an aggregate, but how was that factored in, the fact that they have the highest commercial rates?
Sure, it's a great question. Yes, Recology's commercial rates are higher than others. Recall that we talked about this on Tuesday, December 4th as well. The RFP scores, it's a total aggregate number, and so there are differences between all proponents by service level, by stream, single-family versus commercial. Just as in a typical Public Works project, as we bid out Public Works projects, we have different line items for material costs. The lowest response of bid on those costs is that total aggregate number at the bottom. But there's always a variance between contractor A and contractor B in terms of the amount that, you know, 5/8 crushed rock costs for a contractor. It's the same thing here in the solid waste world. So each line item and service level is different between the haulers. At the end of the day, it's the total aggregate revenue number that is what was determined for the score, and Recology is the lowest.
Bruce.
Jason, we've heard public speakers tonight say, use the term "kickbacks." We've heard that this might even be illegal in other arenas. Maybe I should turn to our city attorney for that, but can you help us understand what's going on and what, you know, what's going on?
I'll do the best I can. There is no kickbacks whatsoever in this contract. The 3.5% administrative fee, as was discussed with all the proponents, so as we went through the RFP process, we provided numerous rounds of question and answering. We actually met with the individual proponents ahead of time. We provided extensive answers to the questions, and all along the way, we talked about the city has an interest in adding an administrative fee or sustainability fee. We landed on the sustainability fee rather than an administrative fee to try and direct it back towards sustainability programming. There's always been a longstanding history and desire among our community and the council to fund sustainability, and we've always struggled to try and fund it. And this contract provided an opportunity to dedicate some money for sustainability program specific to it, not swapping with other general fund programs or things like that, specific to sustainability. All the proponents knew that that was the interest of the city all along, and it was to be included as the final contract, contract finalization component of the RFP process. As far as the legality of the alternative proposal tonight, it is outside of the typical procurement process. It is, we feel that the RFP is the most competitive and fair and transparent way to solicit solid waste services. Republic did have an opportunity to direct negotiate with the city to begin with. Unfortunately, timing, time was of the essence, and we didn't have leveraging power on the city's side to negotiate a good rate. The markets were in complete disarray, given the China sword, and we had a timeframe in which we had to procure a new contract. So the RFP provided us the best and cleanest way forward to get the most competitive pricing and the most participation.
Wendy.
Hey there, thank you for that update. I'm still not clear what we get out of 3.5% fee, or tax, or whatever you want to call it. So I see that 1% or 2% is needed to administer the contract, and I'm struggling with where we lack the staff capacity to do that already, so in general, could you tell me what we might get at the different levels of service? If it's zero, if it's one, if it's two, if it's three and a half, like what are we getting for three and a half versus two or nothing?
I'll do my best here. So as you heard last Tuesday, 1% to 2% is typical contract administration overhead needed. That's consistent across other contracts, so at 3.5%, we're slightly above that. The rationale for 3.5% is because there's a shared risk here. In addition, the public education outreach is going to be needed ongoing. The King County has their drafted solid waste comprehensive plan. It includes additional education outreach goals to move towards 70%. That 70% target's just an interim target. There's going to be much work that's needed. Recology will do a portion of it, a significant portion of it, as the contractor, but it requires the city connection, partnership, collaboration, to reach out to our community and make sure that we are targeting, and make sure that we are meeting our performance measures to actually move forward progressively to meet our goals. How that, I would outline how we could, what it would look like in the Agenda Bill. 3.5% is, you know, given, like I said, given the additional risk associated with the contract, the additional need for programming and education outreach, and the future sustainability initiatives, that's where we came at 3.5%. Again, it's not, it's to enhance our programming, it's not directly tied to an FTE.
Any other council members? Bruce and Saleem?
Our consultant had talked to us earlier about the, what happens if we go forward, and you spoke to it a bit, but I'd like just a little bit more of a drill down on what happens if we were to take Republic's offer of a three-year contract, and how that puts us into what was described, I think, as a bind, because we can't then likely run a good, well-leveraged second RFQ. Could you just speak to how you see that playing out?
Sure. Basically, there's a competitive process set up, the evaluation criteria, and a path from the beginning to the end to make a decision. What Republic has asked you to do is essentially to suspend the RFP process, throw it out, and enter into negotiations for an interim contract. The difficulty there is, there are actually several aspects to it, but one of them is that you would have to negotiate the agreement. There are some ideas that are put out there, but the actual language would need to be developed, and meanwhile, while you're working through what this amendment's going to say and what's going to be required on both parties, the weeks slip by, and actually, the city would not have a recourse at that point, because you would have hitched your wagon to this process, and nobody else would have any time to respond if the negotiations weren't fruitful. Further, you would be in a position of suspending a process that attracted a lot of interest and a lot of competition, and to think that then you have three years, and then you're going to go out and do another RFP in another year for your two-year process and have much interest in it, I think, you know, it's, it would be a question for the different proponents about whether to actually propose on it, and whether you'd have a competitive environment. And I think that is a serious concern, because a number of procurements come up with only one proposal, and because the other vendors either felt that the city was just fishing and was really intending to basically sole-source it, or whatever, and it was not worth their time to prepare a proposal. So I think there's a little bit of reputational risk in suspending a process and just entering into sole-source negotiations to extend an agreement, and it would put the city in a bind, because if you took that course of action, there's no turning back. You have no other option, you're out of time.
Thanks. Benson, and then I'm going to have a question, I think we have Saleem next.
I'm just going to follow up on Councilmember Wyker's question, you know, regarding the use of the sustainability fee amount. I'm just, I'm not sure if you answered her question specifically, and I guess I'm just going to give you that chance again. In terms of, you know, as I look at the description in the Agenda Bill as far as what those funds could be used for, you know, it's obviously more than the enhanced partnerships, I guess. Is that correct? Okay, and then, so I guess what can't... Okay, and then, so I guess what, what can't we do? I mean, and more importantly, I guess maybe the way to do it, Recology is going to be putting forth some effort in this whole public education. I'm just trying to figure out exactly what they do and then where does that leave us and what needs to be done after that? You just mentioned that they were going to participate in the public education. I just want to get more information.
So I'll try and provide an example. So I'll take a multifamily facility, for example, where we have diversion is a major problem for us, and how do you educate that facility so that we improve our diversion streams? To approach that, it's going to require both the contractor and the city to engage with that facility, to come up with the proper mechanisms to improve diversion rates. It could be through adjusting their containers, you know, going back to a single can entry in terms of recycle, and I'm just throwing ideas out there, but that type of collaboration is going to be necessary to improve that diversion rate. It does cross between the contractor and the city. Ultimately, at the end of the day, the city has to hold the contractor accountable to make sure that those programs are targeted, they're specific, the performance measures are being met according to the contract. That's an example of that type of collaboration and partnership that'll be necessary to improve, improve these streams as we move forward. Does that help?
If you can provide an example, I guess, you know, I guess on page four of the agenda bill, it just goes further. I wasn't sure if there was anything that you wanted to specifically highlight, I guess, in terms of why the fee is necessary, why the city can't do without the fee.
Sure, I mean, absolutely. We identified in the agenda bill, I mean, it's, again, council goal number three is to deepen our commitment to sustainability, talks about a styrofoam ban, would talk about different programs that the council would like to see the city explore. How do we get those off the ground and moving forward? This is a mechanism to start making that happen. Again, if, if the council so chooses, if they want to adjust that 3.5% fee, you can certainly, that's within your, that's within your authority to do that tonight.
Okay, so I'm going to take a turn, then we have Saleem and Dave coming up. What, I'm just going to make one commoner and observation. What I'm hearing coming from you, Jason, in conversations with staff over the last few days is, is some part of this fee seems to be linked to sustainability and some of it seems to be linked to administrative. So there's a part of me that, you know, would, would love a little bit more crispness or clarity, but my question actually is both to you and to our consultant, because what I've taken away in terms of reading through this contract and looking at what the model was, the, the rate model and the service model that we had historically with what's in front of us, is they're very different. And they're different, not just in terms of the frequency of pickup of recyclables or compostables, but just in terms of the realities of the commodity markets regarding recyclables, the sharing of rate, or the, the sharing of the valuation with either the, directly with the ratepayers or with the city somehow. And there's some other intuitive sort of business model changes as well. What would help me is if you can talk about whether or not basic garbage hauling is going to be different in the next 10 years than where it has been in the previous 10 years, because I'm hearing a lot coming from the community that says, continue with what we have, it's great, it's good. And I'm, I'm just, through all the reading and conversations, feeling like, but that's not an option, and not just from a time perspective, but just from the realities of a global market. Am I close to accurate?
Yeah. Well, the market's one thing. I think the, the other thing that wasn't stated explicitly is that there's a real danger of having one of the city's largest contracts just adrift and not managed actively. A lot of smaller cities don't have a solid waste manager. They have a portion of a, of a FTE overseeing the contract. And what happens is nobody's really monitoring performance particularly intensively. You know, the contractor might come to the city and say, you know, it's not worth me doing this, can we just get a break on that? And they, they might be doing something else and say, sure. And what happens is you have a very fundamentally important utility that really is not actively managed like any of the other ones. And that was actually the rationale for the administrative fee originally with other cities. It hasn't been called a sustainability fee, it's been called administrative fee because it's tried to tie all the costs of solid waste collection into those rates instead of relying on other taxes, and it's more of a direct cost accounting. So they take a portion of the, of the administration and it goes to actually running the contract. And under this new contract, you know, there, if, for example, whether the city gets the revenue from commodities or whether the residents do, somebody's got to pay attention to that. You have to do due diligence on it. You can't just, you know, let it float. And so part of that is, I guess, a plea to more professionally manage contracts and to allow the resources for it, and it is paid for in the rates. The other thing I would point out in the other administrative fees that are up around 12%, 13%, and this is a complete red herring, and I'm not suggesting you go there, but most of those cities have taken a chunk of that administrative fee and applied it to their overlay programs or road maintenance because the solid waste trucks are the heaviest trucks running on residential roads and the road damage. So when you look at that chart of all those administrative fees, there is actually a rationale because they're trying to, again, take the entire cost of the system and have it into the rates instead of all these cross subsidies from the general fund or whatever else. So the main point is, I think it's a more complicated world. There's a reason to manage contracts more professionally. No reflection on Jason, this is like, this is a changing world. And it's also, you know, when you actually get back and you look at what it takes to manage a contract, it involves being involved in regional bodies, different groups trying to work on the recycling market issues and things like that, and that's time. And a lot of small cities just don't have the staff resources to be involved and be in a position to be at the table when these things are discussed.
Great, thank you. Next we have Saleem and then Dave.
Jeff, this might, might include you a little bit. So my questions is around, when I, when I think through these decisions, any decision that really comes before council, I'm, I'm pretty data-driven. And so it helps me to be able to have some numbers, some data in front of me of what have we seen, what should we expect, what might we think, what's happened in front of me to help make that decision. When Republic has come to us in this interim week between December 4th and now and started essentially just throwing items at the wall to see what would stick, they've come up with an offer that is a 17.5% rate increase. That's juxtaposed with what we discussed last week, which was a 29% rate increase, but was a different set of services, different set of circumstances. Can you just talk a little bit about, how do you have, does this happen? Is this normal in solid waste to have these kind of, after the RFP negotiations from a bidder that is an incumbent that realizes they're losing a bid based on a staff recommendation? And didn't I hear even additional concessions tonight in terms of the commodity value now coming back to the city? When I had a phone call this week, that was not on the table. Now, I think after the two minute and 30 second appearance, it is on the table. How is a council supposed to perceive that and kind of step away from, look, you were a bidder, you submitted a bid, you didn't have the best price or the best qualitative remarks? Just talk a bit about that because I, this is new to me. I find it intriguing. It's not pleasant, but intriguing. But I'd just be curious about your thoughts on why somebody that is the incumbent didn't just offer the best bid?
Well, it happens in a quarter, a third of the cases probably. And I think over the years, I've really tried to make sure that all proposals are evaluated in a consistent framework and that, you know, there's a conscious decision to have the process, go through the process, decide what you're going to end up with, and everybody's providing numbers based on the same contract, because that's always the problem. If you don't provide a contract to the RFP, everybody's, you know, they'll say anything to get to the table to start negotiating. And so I've found over the years, you have to be very specific about, here is the contract, give us your alternatives. There's a provision in the RFP that if they can provide alternative proposals, they can provide exceptions. If there's something in the contract they feel that is unfair, they can't meet, they can provide a, a pricing and alternative language. All that's structured in the RFP to make it as transparent as possible and so that everybody is proposing things within the framework of the RFP. And when you go outside that, you're often just, it is sort of like throwing anything that'll stick to the ball, that'll get, derail the process so you can get into the negotiating table, and that generally gets shut down. It occasionally succeeds, so.
Just a quick follow-up. In that process, and you were involved in those conversations, was there something in our RFP that was so not deliverable by Republic that that threw their bid off? I mean, you certainly had conversations back and forth.
I don't think so. We had an industry review loop where we put the draft set of documents out, and we let everybody make comments, and sometimes there were consistent comments from all the vendors, and we changed things to correspond to that. Sometimes only one vendor had a particular issue they wanted to see changed. So we already did that. We also met with all the haulers after they submitted comments in case they wanted to say anything privately, that they didn't want to put down a paper about how the process was going to work. So we went through all that, and we made revisions to the contract, we made revisions to the RFP, and nobody, actually, that's a, I'm not absolutely sure, but I don't think anybody provided any contract exceptions in this process. And so I think we had a very intensive process for people to put their best foot forward.
The other thing I would just add to that, too, is we did add Republic's email that came into the council on Thursday as an attachment. It's included in the attachment that was added to the revised agenda bill tonight, so you can see it. You are correct. The offer is different than as proposed on Thursday. Again, as Jeff mentioned, we haven't had, we haven't fine-tuned any of these numbers with them because everything is a moving target, so.
Great, thank you. Dave?
Okay, Jason, I want to see if, if we can do a little bit of math cam for a minute and then also talk about sort of the council's ability to, to impact the proposal as stands. It's the perfect slide. So we have a current resident, if we, if we sort of make everything apples to apples and use the 2019 tipping numbers, our current resident would pay $27.57.
Correct. So $27.57 is the current existing 2018 Republic rate under the existing contract.
Got it.
What you hear, see here on, in the front of you is the 32.39. That's the 17.5% increase with the additional 2019 tipping fee.
Okay, so the, so the revised outside of the RFP number that we get from Republic is 17% higher than what a resident is paying currently today. Then if we, if we look at the, this is where I'm going to mix the two topics. If we look at Recology's offer, we have all of these things below the line. Weekly recycling, we, the council has the ability to remove that from the agreement, correct?
Correct.
Council has the ability to, instead of taking the commodity value of $2.40, we can return that to the, essentially return that to the public, to the public to buy down the rate.
Correct.
Okay, and then thirdly, same thing, we could eliminate or change, alter that 3.5% city sustainability fee.
Correct.
Which means if we, if we removed all of that, we could get down to $29.78 if my math is, well, you've got it right there. Perfect. Your math is my math, which puts us, puts us only at an 8% increase over today's for a 10-year agreement.
10 plus 2, correct. New trucks, new toters, all the qualitative components that come in with Recology as well, plus the bulky, on-call bulky waste collection. It also includes the city, the town center services of up to 34 receptacles, and that does move towards weekly organic collection as well. That's included in this base contract.
So we have the ability to move from what was a 29% increase to residence to essentially an 8% increase to residence for a 10-year agreement. Okay, thank you.
I did want to follow up on that. So we picked, this example is a 32-gallon can cart, which is your most common service level. There's 2,400 or 2,300 customers on that service level. And I just wanted to be very specific because it's easy to throw around this percentage rate increase in the new contract, but it varies significantly by service level. For example, if I look at what your 20-gallon customer would be looking at under, once he's, the same math goes on, it's a 1% increase. If I look at the 35-gallon, it's an 8%. If I look at a 60, 64-gallon, it's a 17% increase. And if I look at a 90, 96-gallon cart, it's an 11% increase. So it's highly specific, you know, you're dealing with, with per household offsets here, but the underlying rates are very different. So there isn't, you know, we can't say, yes, all your single-family ratepayers will see 8% or something. It just varies by service level and depends what they have. That's just the way the rates are.
Would it be fair to say, though, given the variables, that those rates that you just quoted, those estimates of increases would still be lower than what Republic has?
I think so, but you're getting back into the residential versus commercial mix in that, you know, when I look at, what I try to do in evaluating the cost of proposals is to make sure that I'm not biasing towards residential or commercial, and so I do that a product sum of the entire service levels and customers. And again, every single customer is seeing a different level, and some of the commercial will be higher than that and some of them not.
Wendy, and then Saleem.
Okay. Thank you for that rate and math question, Dave. I appreciate it. So the commodity adjustment mechanism, so if that goes back to ratepayers, if they don't recycle correctly, do the rates go up? Like, tell me how, how moving that commodity adjustment from the city to the ratepayers adjusts.
It would be a re, a uniform rebate, basically. And, and the, the frequency of it, you know, it could be on everybody's bill monthly. It could just buy down the rates, so the rates are lower. We don't have the mechanism, but basically that's a per household amount that the rates would go down, and it wouldn't be dependent on whether an individual household recycles or not.
Can you go further in your granularity? Is it based on how effective Mercer Island is or how effective all Recology customers in aggregate? So is it, or?
It's specific to Mercer Island. Actually incredibly specific to Mercer Island. Most of the other cities have commercial recycling embedded, too, so the composition of their recycling stream is different. So what is in the contract is doing a sort of one entire truck of the recycling route to determine the composition and then look at what's actually coming in and what the value of that is and rebating that to the customers. So it's actually highly specific to Mercer Island.
All right, Saleem, and then Bruce.
Okay, well, we've, you know, we've gone through this a lot, and I think I understand the levers that we can pull. Dave did a good job of going through and kind of stating, under the current construct, the one of the, the competitive bid, the RFP, there are a lot of decisions to be made, and we're going to be here all night if we don't get to the sausage-making part. So I'm going to make a motion, and I'm going to put all those levers into the motion, and then let's see if we can make any progress on this. So I'm going to move to authorize the city manager to execute the comprehensive contract for garbage recyclables and compostable collection services with Recology King County Incorporated, and set the sustainability fee at 0%, direct the commodity value to buy down the trash collection rate, and set the recycling collection to every other week's service.
Second.
Second, right.
So it's been first and second, and Saleem, you want to speak to it?
Yeah, so I'll speak to it. So effectively, what that would do is get, get this residential rate example to the 8% increase over the, the previous rate that we've discussed, which is obviously a huge reduction from the 29%. But as I've looked at this, there is additional upside in this scenario. That commodity value is based on a $65 per ton kind of baseline starting value. It is first sampled in November of the following month of the initiation of the contract, and then it's again sampled in May and November of the following year. The way that you wrote that, and I, and I give you great respect on, on the methodology that you used, but the timing of the market, which is effectively that, is such that 65 is probably a, a worst-case scenario. But even though the, the way it calculates is a percentage off of that, so it has a shock absorber against it, and I, I think that there's a good chance that buy down of the rate could even go up. So I think in terms of alignment of incentives, a person standing at home in front of three bins who has a choice of where to put an item, if they know that their rate is going to be bought, bought down by that decision of where, where they choose to recycle versus compost versus utilize the solid waste that would go to the, the trash, this to me is a mechanism that makes the most sense. So, you know, I know we'll, we'll go through it and see if we can get there, but I think this is a good starting spot.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table. Other council members. Bruce.
You preceded me just by a bit. I'm going to ask a question about feasibility and I'm not quite sure whether there's a motion here or not, but I'm going to ask feasibility first. So part, part of the motion is let's go to every two-week service for the recycling whereas one, every one week for both trash and yard waste or kitchen waste. The staff's sense was that it might be advantageous to go to every week's service for everything. In doing this, we're saving, in adopting the motion, if we were to do that, we would be saving the public $2.78, but we would be creating a sort of funny thing where two of your containers go out and then three of your containers go out and then two of your containers go out. The thought is, is it feasible for us to implement this, but then poll the public sometime after this has been adopted, to see whether there is a, an interest on the public's part in paying more to get the weekly service for all three and then modify the contract if indeed there is. And what I would imagine is that this begins in the fall of 2019, so sometime in 2020 we would poll the public, statistically valid sampling is what I'm imagining, so that we, we get a, you know, fair interpretation of what the, what the broad populace is really thinking and then change the contract if that's what the, if that's what the public's sentiment is. So I put it to you first before I put it to the council and see whether there's an appetite here.
Yes, so we've been working with Recology to include an opener in the contract specific to this alternative. So the short answer is yes, we could include language in the contract that says, look, if the time's not right now, let's keep this as a possibility to talk about down the road. And we can, we've, in our conversations with Recology, they're open to that, that language that's being proposed. So yes, that is a possibility. Go ahead.
It's actually better than that. You wouldn't, it's not a re-opener. Recology's agreed to this, actually all the haulers have agreed to this language in previous contracts. It actually commits them to providing the service for that rate upon 180 days' notice from the city. So you don't have to open the contract, you don't have to have a lot of discussions or negotiate. They would commit to that price just on 180 days' notice. So if you, council says, let's do this, the city manager writes a letter, it's done. And if you don't do it, it just stays there.
Dave?
So just to complete, I, I'm sorry, but just to wrap this topic up then, so the existing contract contemplate, or doesn't preclude the possibility of doing that. So in fact, there's actually nothing I would need to do here in terms of a motion to, to keep alive the possibility of doing that, if I understand what you're saying.
It could go either way. You could make that motion and that would make sure that the language gets added to the contract. If you didn't make that motion and weekly recycling was not optioned, we would probably want to get that in there anyway because it's, there's no reason to not have that commitment in the contract for future councils. So one way or another, we'd want it in there.
I would say it's preferable to have it as part of the motion, that that's the intent of the council to include that. It just has, there's more authority coming from a council direction like that.
Okay, so I would offer an amendment then, which would be to include language that would give us the option of shifting to weekly service for recycling if there is.
Sufficient documented public.
Interest, yeah.
Interest.
What he's just saying is it would be good to actually codify it rather than, rather than leave it unsaid.
So the only thing I would say.
The motion needs a second.
It needs a second.
Second.
And I've spoken enough to it already. I'm just trying to create flexibility here, but no intent of, of changing where you're headed in the near term.
Yeah, so my only comment would be that I wouldn't tie the motion to the date, the public process of, right, just make it mechanically a motion of the contract, RFP. If we want to reserve that option, reserve it. Let's not tie it to anything additional.
I was, I was starting stalling out when I got to the if in my motion and I think your, your comment is well taken, so somebody help me, Robert's Rules of Order, how do I, I know there's no such thing as friendly amendment, but.
If he withdraws it and I withdraw my second, then you could re-amend.
We have it recorded as Councilmember Wong making the second, but in any event, it can be withdrawn and you can restate a new motion.
Are you withdrawing it?
Yes, I'm withdrawing it if, if, I think Benson has to allow, but I'm not sure, I don't recall exactly what my language is because I did it on the fly, so stop at the if, if you've, if you've got.
Can I just re-amend the original motion so we just get this in?
No, for clarity, it's better to just restate it and we can find it in the audio and so we can do that and then just stop it short of the if clause at the end.
But just to reiterate, so what we're talking about is putting an option in the contract for recycling at a future date.
Correct.
Weekly, weekly recycling.
Weekly recycling.
Correct. And so I believe the motion has been restated and so it needs a second.
Second.
It's been first and second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Saying none? We are back to the.
I'm a little late. Can I just make a comment? I, I think.
Well, let's, let's, so the motion is passed and we're back at the original motion. Now, why don't you just go ahead and speak to.
I, I think for purposes of the, of the contract, that makes sense to, to not put all the qualifications. I think it is important though that at least there is that discussion. I mean, I don't want people to think that because the council reserves the option to change the, the contract or to request weekly recycling, that the council will simply do that. Obviously, there's going to have to be a lot of public input before that happens. And so I think even though you didn't condition your amendment on going out to the public, I think that's something that is important at least to have in the discussion and at least in the minutes or reflected in the record.
Wendy?
So likewise, with the sustainability fee, I think there's the possibility of going zero to whatever in the contract. So is that true or false? True. So we're setting it at zero for tonight's purposes and leaving it open to future councils to implement whatever sustainability fee they might want to do at some point annually every year that we review this. I just want to be crystal clear on this possibility going forward.
The language in the contract basically says that when the rate, annual rate cycle comes up, which is when you look at King County disposal fee increases and the CPI increase, at that point in that window, every fall, if the council wanted to change an administrative fee and change it to 1% or whatever, or change it down, that you simply tell the contractor to incorporate that into the rates and they do it. So you, what it means in practice is a council over the summer would have to know exactly what it would want to do and go through and, and come to agreement on that and then start that rate cycle for the next year. So it's a, it's a process that's laid out in the contract.
And it's a council decision, not an administrative decision, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have Bruce, Dave and then Benson.
There's no motion. Go. I'm going because I got, I got skipped a little bit there. So I'll speak in favor of, of Celine's motion. I think it, it makes a lot of sense to dial back all of the additional, or all of the additions so that we drive the lowest possible rate for the citizens. So I like that part of it. The other thing is I, I feel like this has been a pretty successful outcome because while it's, it is a bit of sausage-making that, that everybody's had to endure, you go through an RFP process that's, that's public and people get to see what's going on. We had a number of, a number of companies involved in it, so that's solid, right? We didn't have just one bidder, so that's great. In the middle of that, we have, you know, sort of unsolicited addendum to a proposal, which was outside of the RFP process, but then that helped drive the rate discussion in a way that drives us from a 29% increase to residents to only an 8% increase. And over a 10 or 12-year contract, that seems really significant to me. If I think of things like, one I'm particularly tuned into right now is college tuition. It's 163% lower 10 years ago. So when we talk about percentage increase and really at the end of the day, I think of my 99-year-old neighbor who will have a 1% increase because of the small size of, of her garbage collection, that's the kind of citizen we want to super protect. And at the end of the day, me as a sort of the average person in this, in this collection, I'll pay $2.26 more per month over, you know, a, a long contract period. I, I'm okay with that to get a, a solid level of service and trucks that are burning fuel that's literally coming from the results of our toilets. So that's, you know, that's a tremendous drive at sustainability and getting diesel trucks, you know, off-road. So I'll speak in favor of it.
Great. So then we had Bruce and then we had Benson. And I'm going to go ahead and take a turn.
So I largely am, would echo Dave's comments. I, though, reflecting over to Councilmember Wyker and the mayor's, your comments about the sustainability fee and to the mayor's comment, actually at the previous meeting where we talked about why 3.5% and is there another number that makes sense, I will offer a second amendment. And in, in this case, what I would move is that we set the sustainability fee at 2.1% and that we cap it at a maximum of 3.5%. So I'll, that's it. We'll pause there.
For the duration of the contract?
For the contract.
I'll second for the sake of discussion.
So the 2.1% represents 0.6, or 60% of the, the full amount that's there. It was a calculation that the mayor did at the last meeting, the thought being that we have a sustainability role that's, that's only at 0.4% today. And I think there is a tremendous amount of work, much of it laid out in the agenda bill, that revolves around star communities, that revolves around contract management here, that revolves around community education, revolves around having a climate action plan. It's all work that's well beyond the scope of, of the fractional individual that we have today. And so my interest is in bolstering that just a bit here. And so that's, that's the logic in proposing that. And the logic in offering the cap to it is that I've, you know, recognized, obviously there was community interest and, and concern about the fact that there was no cap, we're, could this fee go in the future? It seems to me that alleviating that concern and putting a limit on what the council, what that future councils could do is a, is a reasonable thing to do. So I offer that as a, as an amendment.
So as a person who's seconded that, you know, I, I'm unfortunately probably going to muddy the waters and look to staff to help me out here because, you know, when I proposed it last week, there was definitely a rationale. Tonight, what I've called out is that there's two components in my mind to this fee. One of them is the cost of administering the contract and then the other one is the sustainability element. So there's almost like two different components. Those two different components would require two different sets of behaviors, deliverables, tasks and accountabilities to staff and the community. So we have something of a dichotomy there. Why I'm interested in this, as much as an administrative fee as I am in terms of a sustainability fee, is, is something our consultant said. He said, you know, this is about tying the cost of solid waste to the contract. And I, that's one of the messages that I've picked up from Prop 1. You know, we can argue accurately or inaccurately, but people want to understand exactly what they're paying for. They want to know what their rate is going to. If I pay this much money, this is the level of service I get. And in this sense, I feel like based on the historic model, the historic contract, there was some overlays that were going on in terms of the general fund support for what was the solid waste contract. And so I see this as an opportunity to create greater clarity there, which again is one of the messages that I took from Prop 1. The other piece is, one of my fellow council members made a, a statement which I thought was really interesting and that is, as the residents stand in front of the three bins, they got to figure out which one to put it in. And I know I do. And part of what I'm looking at is for this resource to help make me understand not only which bin it goes in, but what state of affairs it needs to be in when it goes in. Because here's another point, I'll just personal, you know, anecdote. We too order from Amazon. We too, you know, occasionally end up storing those cardboard boxes outside without thinking that they need to be dry before they go into the recycled bin. And that's just been one of the education moments that I've had, as I was going to say, the privilege of going through this process, but you know, whether it's a privilege or not. So, you know, I think I'm going to be looking to Jason first and then potentially Julie, who's had a lot to do with this. If there were 2.1% applied to this contract, how much would be administrative and how much of it would really be helping our residents understand how to get the right stuff in the right bins, in the right condition, so that the rate, the commodity value is optimized and people's rates go down?
I'm going to look to Julie as well. So I think it's, it's, you're asking me to put a number on it and I, it's hard for me to put a number on that.
Not an exact number, but, but a tighter.
Yeah, so I mean, you've heard, you've heard, you've heard the, you've heard our consultant say that the typical contract administration is 1% to 2% on a contract. And so if you're at 2.1, then I could say of that 2.1%, 50% is going to be towards contract admin, which this contract has enhanced performance measurements. We need to be tighter in our quality control of our contractor. And the other 50% is going to be focused on that public education outreach and that sustainability components that are identified in this agenda bill.
Okay. So I think Wendy and Benson.
So Jason, who would do what between you and Ross? Education outreach, contract enforcement, like what does that look like?
So right now, it would, it, right now, there is a piece of me, there is a piece of Ross and there's a piece of an admin that deal with the contract management. Our public education outreach is not very robust at this point. I'm just being frank. It's not robust. It needs to be better. It needs to be tighter. We need to be more engaged with our community partners, our regional partners to get on board with what's happening in our region so that we're not an outlier. That needs to improve. So I would see myself as being the performance component of the contract and Ross would be focused on the education outreach, but those two are interchangeable. There's going to be some performance measurement associated with obviously the contract, the education outreach, so it'll be tied to the contract as well.
And can you remind me what Recology does for education outreach?
So yeah, they will, I mean, they're, they're going to help develop the, the tools, the programs, those specific elements, the targeted education programs, but it's, again, it's through a partnership. We can't just, we can't just give them the reins and say, hey, go create this and not have any quality control over it, right?
No, I get that. That's the state regulators.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I could add, I mean, we explained in the agenda bill that there is a new King County solid waste plan that's trying to target, at least in the interim, that 70% diversion. Why is that important? Because a landfill is a limited resource, bottom line. We only have so much capacity at that landfill. It is going to be really incumbent on cities that use our King County landfill to divert. So how could that look like? Well, I mean, again, this is my past experience in other cities. I mean, have we looked at our C and D, you know, so construction, I'm sorry, construction, demolition, recycling? You know, a lot of cities have ordinances in place that require that you recycle that. I don't even know, I mean, this is something, an area I would have that person devoted to looking at. I know we had our Lake Ridge kids suggest styrofoam ban. I don't know if that's another area we can look at, but hopefully you can get a sense here that it's not our provider or the vendor or the contractor that's going to be responsible for the solid waste comprehensive plan. It's us. It's, we are part of that plan. So I, I do believe this is an area that we have really lacked, the resources to really dive into and examine and review. And some of those will most likely, I think, result in some ordinance changes and tracking legislation and that sort of thing. Again, that's an area, it's low priority because we don't have the resources.
Benson?
Getting back to that plan, I mean, is it only, is it only?
Getting back to that plan, I mean, is it only, is it only a plan? Or is there a mandate coming down?
Maybe Jason can talk more to it. But I mean, here's, ultimately, again, the landfill only has so much space. They're, they do, I know King County does usual projections around when they think they're going to hit that capacity. Yeah. So, I mean, a lot of that plan is devoted around that long-term planning of when we're going to hit that capacity. Obviously, we want to do everything we can to have access to that landfill for as long as possible. So diversion and recycling and composting are all those efforts to do that. Why is that important? Because, you know, we don't want those tipping fees to, we want to manage the long-term tipping fee charges. Because again, it all will go back to our garbage rates. And ultimately, you know, I know there are cities nearby us that ship the garbage away. I mean, there's all kinds of things that are happening. But I mean, I think it's the lowest cost to access the King County landfill. But again, it only has so much capacity.
I'd also, I'd also add that we are part of a local agreement with King County regarding the Mizwak Metropolitan Solid Waste Alliance, where actually the county is going to come before the council in early 2019, asking for the council's support of the King County comprehensive plan. So as a member of that ILA, we do have a responsibility to meet the county's goals and participate in that process.
Great. Dave?
Sure. So I'm going to, I'm going to speak against this amendment and, and try and push us toward getting, as we have a new service, deliver that new service at the lowest possible rate for the, for the citizens. I understand sort of the logic behind wanting to manage the flow and the diversion, but I think there's a lot of education that we have not previously been exposed to coming our way. What I, what I would propose is go with Saleem's original motion, and then let's see what the problem looks like before we tax people to solve the problem that we're not yet clear about. We always have the mechanism to do it. And if we decide, discover that we have an issue or we're not diverting enough, I mean, now we're, we're going to be including commercial, which we've never done in our, in our diversion. So we just don't know what all that looks like. So I would, I would argue, let's start with the lowest possible increase, get the service, see what the education benefits are. And I think there's a big collaboration factor there between the company and the city as well. And then if we find out a year from now, we're just doing a terrible job of that, we can always fund that position through this mechanism.
Thanks, Saleem. And then Benson.
Joe, I may agree with Dave. You know, in terms of the sustainability fee, admin fee, I don't have a problem putting, having the contract bear the cost of administering itself. But what I have a problem with is that when you start your commodity value at $65 a ton, and we're a community that diverts 66% of our waste through the recycling program, compared, I guess, to an average of 62%, we're already above the bar. But with the base value of the commodity set at 65, it's going to take about a year to see which direction we're heading. If we're doing a better job, if, you know, the person who's collecting the waste is having an impact on the 66%, if enforcement of what goes into the cans is being done differently under Recology than it was done after Republic. My understanding is Republic has about a 5% contamination experience in our current recycling. So depending how all of those things move, I think, you know, a year from now, two years from now is when we're looking at performance of the contract in that aspect. What are the things that we can do to improve the commodity value, which I think has a very negligible effect on the actual payback to the city or to the residents? But I do think it's way too early to be thinking about that right now. When I look at the agenda bill on page three, and I see Recology deliverables, they're contractually required deliverables. And then I see city enhancements, and the difference is stark. It's, it's technical assistance for commercial accounts, especially with respect to food waste. And then our responsibility is encourage and publicize. These are not things I'm ready to pay for yet because I don't know that they're necessary, and I don't want to dilute the value of the commodity, paying down the customer's rate with the cost of trying to do that.
Thanks. Benson, then Wendy, and then I'm going to encourage potentially a vote on the, on the amendment.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. You know, actually, you know, I think this probably, people are probably coalescing around the weekly recycling issue and also the commodity values. Really, the issue that seems to be out there right now is this whole sustainability administrative fee discussion. You know, I guess one question I have is if we have no sustainability administrative fee, how is this contract actually going to be, how's the city actually going to monitor it? I've heard people say, well, maybe it's with the contractor monitor it. I don't know if you want, if that's the right approach, whether or not we need to. So that's one question I have. And then maybe if you can answer that, and I have a follow-up. Yeah, I have a question. I have a question. How's the city going to, how's this contract going to be monitored?
Status quo. I mean, it's unfortunate. It's, it's going to be as it is now. I don't see, it's a new contract. There's going to be a learning and a growing up, you know, experience early on, and it's going to be status quo. It's not going to change.
So is it self-report, if people have complaints, it's just self-reporting to the city that, hey, we have a complaint?
Ideally, if there's an issue, they're going to address it with the contractor. And the city should, as a contracted utility, the contractor should be handling the bulk of those calls. As you have all seen through your email inbox and the phone calls that I received, we have received a number of current complaints with our current hauler. That, you know, unfortunately, you're looking at the guy who's picking up the phone and calling folks back to say, hey, we're sorry, your, your service was missed. Let me look into it. And then I get to get on the phone and, and call our contractor to figure out what's going on. We heard some calls last night that they were being, their houses were being picked up at nine o'clock after nine o'clock last night. No notification to the city, no information as to why that was happening. The calls came in. We have to address it. So that's going to be the same. It's all going to be reactive. There's not going to be any proactive work whatsoever with it in terms of complaints.
Wendy?
I would ask, we've also gotten some compliments. And I just want to say, in the context of our larger discussions around budget and priorities of government, sustainability is hugely important, as is human services, as is emergency preparedness, infrastructure maintenance. I think we have a year to transition, and I think we have another year to see how this goes and see how our new partner works. So I'm, I'm in support of Dave and Saleem's effort to start at zero and see what we need and see where we go and, and move forward one year at a time.
Okay. So I'm going to just make one final comment. I'm, again, I'm going to go ahead and support because I think sometimes the way you start a contract is also the way you, you end a contract. And I think educating people at the same time that there's new service has a whole lot of merit. But we'll see where this goes. So all in favor, I'm going to, actually, yeah, I was going to say, let me repeat the, the amendment. Bruce, you're going to keep me honest here. It's a 2.1% city sustainability admin fee capped at 3.5%. So 2.1% for at least, how do I phrase it? It starts at 2.1% with a cap of 3.5% over the life of the contract. He says yes.
Okay. You know, I'm a little, I'm supportive conceptually, but I guess I have a little heartburn with the idea that you would start off at 2.1, and then there's no, that, that number is not locked in for, for a period of time. So the concern is next year, you go to 3.5? I mean,
Well, every, in the contract right now, every year it can be reset as it currently is.
I know, but in terms of giving some certainty to the public, I mean, it's like.
My logic was simply that the, the language in the contract currently doesn't put any cap on it.
I understand that.
And so I was attempting to, well, you know, it's, it's flexibility. But my feeling was that there was too much flexibility, and certainly that was the view of some in the public who noted that. So my, my intent was to both set at a non-zero level and put it, put an upper limit on it.
Okay. So we've articulated the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? So it fails, I believe, for lack of majority. Correct?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So we return to the original motion. Bruce?
I would have preferred to see that amendment pass, but I will support this motion. I think we would do well to remind the public who want to keep their existing service that there is not an option to keep your existing service at the price that you have your existing service. There is only a possibility of keeping your existing service at a 17% increase in that service. And what, what's proposed now before us is a smaller increase and locking it in for a much longer period of time. And so I think this is a, a good outcome for the community, and I will be an advocate in the future for us to revisit the sustainability fee, but not this evening.
Benson?
Yeah, I, I think it's also important, and Jason alluded to this, I think, last week, but I think it's important to remind the community that the services that are being provided under this contract are, you know, saying better, I mean, as, as a judgment call, but I mean, they are enhanced customer service that's going to be provided under this contract. So even though the community is paying more, obviously, with the action of the council now, the increase is not as much as people had thought, what we had originally discussed. But the services that we're going to be getting as a community will be better than what we have now.
Go ahead. And then, yeah, go ahead. Do you want to?
So before we vote on the motion, I'm going to take a stab at amending the motion to additionally cap the sustainability fee at 3.5% for the life of the contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
So my thinking on this is that if you look at the value of the contract and how it runs out its life cycle, it's not, it's still a $50 million contract, I think, but it's not that big a contract. The commodity value is effectively 200, 300,000. I don't see any scenario where it would make sense to spend anywhere near 50% of the value of the reward to try and enhance the reward. So I think that, you know, just as the prior motion suggested, the sustainability fee could be too big a liability, let's put a cap on it.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So the motion has been amended. So we now come back to the amended motion. And Saleem, do you want to go ahead and summarize what exactly it is we're about to vote on?
Yeah. So I think the motion stands as amended to authorize the city manager to execute the comprehensive contract for garbage recyclables and compostable collection services with Recology King County Incorporated, and set the sustainability fee to 0% to cap it at 3.5% for the life of the contract, direct the commodity value to buy down the trash collection rate, and set recycling collection to every other week service while retaining the contractual right to modify that.
Okay, great. So council, you ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion passes 6-0. All right. So, well done, Jason. Thank you to our consultant. Thank you to staff.
Thank you.
And, and I also want to say thank you to the community because I know that there was a lot of work that went into the 12 points of concern that circulated. And, and I appreciate that. I had some email dialogue with people. I hope that people saw it play out up here. Maybe not all points went as the authors would have chosen. But again, I do think that it was a helpful and constructive exercise. So with that, council, we go into our final piece of regular business this evening, which is Agenda Bill 5516, the City Council Position for Number Four Vacancy Candidate Appointment. And just a couple of comments to council, to the people in the room, and also the public. I will not be running this process. We are going to be having our city clerk, supported by Ally Speets, running this process. They're going to be giving us an overview, everyone, an overview of the process in advance so people know how this, this is going to roll. Just one or two other comments. I personally feel that we are incredibly fortunate to have had both the number and the quality and the caliber of candidates that have come before us. So thank you to each and every one of you who applied and have worked hard to represent yourselves. Deb?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Good evening. Deva Strata, City Clerk. I'm just going to read this out to you, and if there's any questions, please feel free to ask. The process for appointing the candidate is a series of voting rounds to reduce the candidate pool to two candidates. For the first round, each council member will be asked to award two points to their top candidate and one point to their second candidate. Assistant to the city manager, Ally Speets, will read the votes aloud, and the city clerk will tally the points for each candidate. The four candidates with the most points will advance to the second round. In the event of a tie, more than four candidates could advance. Council members may speak to their choices for their top two candidates before the second round of voting. For the second round of voting, each council member will go through the same process, awarding two points to their top candidate and one point to their second candidate. The assistant city manager will again read the votes aloud, and I will record the points for each candidate. The two candidates with the most points will advance to the next round. In the event of a tie, this round would be repeated until the top two candidates are identified. The final round of voting will be a vote, will be a roll call vote with each council member casting their vote for their preferred candidate. In the event of a tie, the council can do one of four things. Take a 10-minute recess, reconvene, and repeat this step. No quorums, please. Go into executive session to discuss the qualifications of a candidate pursuant to RCW 4231101H adjourned to a later date to complete the voting process or reopen nominations for new nominees or for reconsideration of previous nominees. And that's where we stand.
Okay. Should we fill out our ballots?
Fill out your ballots, and then
Just so the public knows.
Ally will collect them. I'm going to bring up a spreadsheet up here, and we will tally from there.
So the public knows. It's a small sheet. It says round one in this case. It has the council member name, position one, or, you know, choice number one and choice number two. So go ahead and pass them on down to Ally when you're ready. I was thinking the same thing.
I'm working on it. There it is. Thank you. Can everybody read that?
If there's a chance to bold it, that would be helpful, probably for the public.
Okay. So we are going to go in diocese order. So Councilmember Wiesentiner, first vote for two points is Lisa Andrell. Second vote for one point is John Conrad. That's wrong. My apologies. Okay. Councilmember Nice, or excuse me, Deputy Mayor Nice. I'm sorry. I'm in the wrong order. I'll get it. All right. Councilmember Basset, first vote for two points is Craig Reynolds. Second vote for one point is John Conrad. Deputy Mayor Nice, first vote for two points is Lisa Andrell. Second vote for one point is Heather Cartwright. And then we have Mayor Bertland. First vote is for Craig Reynolds for two points. Second vote is for Lisa Andrell for one point. And then Councilmember Wong, first vote for two points is Craig Reynolds. Second vote for one point is John Conrad. And Councilmember Wyker, the first vote for two points is Heather Cartwright, and the second vote for one point is Lisa Andrell. Can you bold that total column, Deb? There you go. So it looks like it's Craig Reynolds, Lisa Andrell, Heather Cartwright, and Jonathan Conrad. Yeah. Sorry. It looks great on my monitor today. There we go.
Okay. So just to reiterate, going into round two, we have four candidates for consideration. Lisa Andrell, Heather Cartwright, Jonathan Conrad, and Craig Reynolds. Lisa Andrell, Heather Cartwright, Jonathan Conrad, and Craig Reynolds. Okay. I would argue we narrowed it substantially.
I can even see it with my trifocals. So as suspected, round two votes are exactly the same as round one votes.
Well, I'd like to give people a chance to speak to their candidates, their decisions, if that's...
Either that or the other suggestion I have, Mayor Bertland, is you take the top two candidates, that each have six votes. Fair point. And then you pick between those two.
Council?
Based on your scoring, the top two. The top two are Lisa Andrell and Craig Reynolds.
Okay, so I am now going to ask council, do you want to go ahead and vote, or do, does anybody want to speak to their particular candidate? All right, let's go and vote.
Round three, we're voting on the top two.
We would take these votes and take the top two, and then each of you will do a roll call vote. So you will, or you'll write down... Well, we can do roll call by paper, but you'll just vote for one person.
Mm-hmm. And is there a final round on that? Yep. So use your final round ballot, only write one name down. This is your vote for who you would like to be the next council member.
Does it matter if we use round three or final round?
Please use final round or round three. Just kidding, either one's fine. Okay, council member Wiesentiner has voted for Lisa Andrell. Council member Basset has voted for Craig Reynolds. Deputy Mayor Saleem Nice has voted for Lisa Andrell. Mayor Debbie Bertland has voted for Lisa Andrell. Council member Wong has voted for Craig Reynolds, and council member Wyker has voted for Lisa Andrell.
All right, well, I think, congratulations to new council member, Lisa Andrell, who's on a plane, I believe, coming back tonight. And I do want to give council members a chance to speak, in part because I want the chance to speak too. And I would just start off, again, by saying, you know, individuals in the community, and even a couple council members, asked me, you know, what criteria I was going to use? And one logic or one approach was to vote as if I were at my kitchen table, in the privacy of my own home, with a ballot. Another approach was also as a council member, and arguably a mayor, who needs to understand and respect, in particular, what just took place with regard to Prop 1, and the need to represent some of those interests and voices on this council. So with that, I, in particular, felt that there were three, there were more than three outstanding candidates, but definitely Mr. Conrad, Mr. Reynolds, and Ms. Andrell. Mr., well, Kwan was, he's been terrific, but I have to be honest, the fact that you were interested in just a few months was something of a concern, and certainly Heather Cartwright, who's put a lot of time and effort into these issues. So it was by no means an easy decision for me, it was one that was a blend of my own kitchen table, plus a responsibility, I feel, as a council member, in the vote tonight, taking place here and publicly. So that's how I landed. I don't know if any other council members want to speak. Benson?
As the mayor said, I think we are blessed to have so many qualified people apply for the position. And obviously, even though I didn't vote for Lisa, I admire her greatly, and one of the things that I find, probably one of the most important things, going forward, obviously, Prop 1 went down in defeat, I mean, that's not the issue anymore. The issue really is the council working together and being very analytical in terms of how we look at issues and hopefully be open-minded. And so I look forward to working with Lisa, and going forward. I also look forward to working with all the folks who applied, and frankly, I think, as the mayor pointed out, and I volunteered, I tried for the appointment process twice, and I was shot down twice, and so that's not the end of, if you're interested in serving on the council, just think in terms of running. I mean, so it's not that far away. So again, encourage people to stay involved. The fact that you showed that much interest in going through the process speaks volumes of who you are, and I think people, basically, members of the community are very thankful for your efforts, and hopefully you'll continue to be involved. So thank you.
You know, not to sound like a broken record, but just a big thank you to everybody who put their name in the hat. When I saw the long list of people who were interested, I thought, have they not been watching what's been going on? But having a chance to have worked with Kwan, who, you know, I think you were just so thoughtful and careful and balanced, and your work on the utility board is super appreciated, and John, you've done so much work with the city too, in volunteering with the Red Cross, and Craig, your work on the CAG, I mean, we had a lot of good people to pick from, and a lot of people who spent time trying to really get deep into the subject matter, which is not, you know, as I found out, is not easy to do. So I think we are lucky, and I wish we could, I wish we'd have more people, but I think the election is around the corner, so I think hopefully we will have some of you put your names in the hat. And, you know, at the end of the day, for me, what happened with Prop 1 was, resonated quite a bit, and I don't think that people moved to Mercer Island to have fewer services, and yet at the same time, I understand, you know, fiscal conservancy as well, and I think Lisa is a good, balanced voice at that, and I think has a particular skill set that probably will come of use to us in some of the issues that we're about to face on our work plan over the next 18 to 24 months.
You know, I'll just quickly add, we were blessed by the applicant pool. Bar none, it's been the most qualified group of applicants I've seen in the city council before. And I haven't, I never saw that. But what I will say is that there's five seats up for election next year, and I think that you look at this and you say, you know, this was a good trial run, it's been a good opportunity for you to kind of get your head around what it's like to serve up here and be in front of us, or be up here. I will say, it's a bit of a blessing not to be chosen, because running a campaign is a whole nother uphill battle, and I think the, you know, I hope that I'm going to see a lot of faces out there on the campaign trail, and I'm happy to pitch in, but I do think that it's going to be a lot of work, and there's going to be a lot of discussions next year, it's going to be a really strong election cycle, so, you know, let us know what we can do to support you.
All right, I'll go first, and I just want to say, this is one of the toughest things I've had to do up here, and there are really so many great candidates and so many different issues to weigh, and I just want to thank everyone for running, and I encourage you to actually get a campaign organized and file in May, and give it a shot this summer and next fall. So it's tough, but it's not impossible, and when you want to serve, you got to do it. So thank you very much.
Welcome to Lisa. Thank you to all who ran. Please consider running next year. But beyond that, I do want to add that, a reminder to the citizens who, vast community of 23,000 folks out there who are quiet, living their lives, but a handful of folks who are very vociferous in their comments about council and others with the city who are essentially volunteers in what they are doing. Citizens, and Lisa's now joining us. And I just ask you to pause occasionally before you write that angry next-door post, and think about the fact that you're writing that about your neighbors and folks who should be your friends, who are just trying to do the right thing for your community. And keep that in mind as you have that conversation. I think we all, you, council, and everyone, will have a better experience for it, and it'll serve to heal some of the wounds that are there, and put us on the path that we all would like to be on.
So I'd actually just lift off that for a second. There was an interesting op-ed that was put out there today by, I think, 44 different senators, and there was a line in there that I appreciate, and they said, "We were often opponents, but we were not enemies." And I certainly hope that as we go forward as a community, and many of the conversations we have, that we might occasionally be opponents, that we never be enemies. So that, council meeting is adjourned.